For Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five at six thirty one P M. We'll begin with the roll.
Oh, I'm taking a helm key.
Here.
Weiss.
Herr.
Lidle.
Present.
Tucker Long.
Here.
Keller.
Present.
Swanson.
Here.
Host.
Present.
And Harrison.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. With that, we will move on to item three, which is public comment. If any members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to do so. Now, it's anyone rushing towards the microphone table. We will move on to item four, which is approve the minutes from the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four Committee of the Whole Meeting. Questions, comments, corrections, or motions to approve those minutes? Alder Lidle.
Move approval.
Motion by Alder Lidle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Helmke. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four Committee of the Whole Meeting say aye.
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 Oppose no. The minutes are approved. With that, we move on to item five, which is the presentation of the proposed twenty twenty six city budget. Mr. Olick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your patience in advance tonight with me. Holly is enjoying Massachusetts, so gotta gotta apparently give her off too. But but anyway, this is my my goal tonight is to not talk like an auctioneer. There's a lot to fit in in the thirty minutes that we have. And again, I go back to what a nice collaborative process we have here in the city of Verona. And that's in comparison to a lot of different places that we can look not too far away. So I think it really is, in the big scheme of things, a lot of long term, good fiscal decision making on behalf of all of you, but also those who have preceded us in order to be able to present a budget that we can afford. And I think it's also a very good value to the residents. So on behalf of the staff, this is our our budget presentation for tonight. So what stares us in the face seemingly year after year is this growth rate that we have in Verona. So we're up to sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety six, which is nearly fifty percent more people than we had in Verona from twenty fourteen. So with all of that brings a lot of the the wonderful things we do for residents, a lot of the workload that we have at the city. You know, we're building new subdivisions. Eventually, those roads will have to be maintained at some point in the future, right? So it drives drives everything that we do here at the city. So we're up, I think, about five hundred, a little less than five hundred people. Our equalized value continues to increase as well. We're up to four point six billion dollars here citywide. So there's a lot of activity going on in our tax increment districts, which is our TIDS, and that's the difference between that teal bar and that gold bar. So that's the property values in those TIDS, and that's real economic development, too, the gap between those two bars. You could think of places like the Tech Park. We created a TID last year by Epic. We have ACS, which is a standalone TID, tax increment district, and then downtown, we have like the classic Steve Brown Apartments, you know, the park. Those are all of our our current economic development zones, which are the TIDS. We're also seeing changes in our property tax base. So non-TID equalized value continues to rise. So what would this be? This would be like new residential development, industrial, things like that that occur outside those districts. And then a last key indicator here is net new construction. This is really the sum total of organic growth in a community. It nets out any any sort of like, if you're doing renovations, it would, you know, net out, you know, what you removed and then add back in what what you you put into a project. What you put into that project over and above what was there before is net new construction. So it's it's the actual growth of the community. And in particular, Verona, hometown USA, is fourth highest in the entire state on net new construction. You can see there two over two hundred and thirty million dollars this last year. Fourth in the state, only to Madison, Milwaukee, and Pleasant Prairie, who is installing the data centers from what was the Foxconn project. So a lot of lot of growth going on in Verona. Highlights of the proposed budget. We're going to meet our municipal levy limit of seventeen million, three hundred and forty one thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. That's the absolute limit we can levy. Again, our net new construction, that two hundred and thirty million dollars plus increased by five point four percent citywide. We also, in this proposed budget, looked did a compensation study, would looked at around at the area market and statewide, did comparisons. And then we are implementing that for this next year in twenty twenty six for nonrepresented positions to continue to attract top talent and retain the talent that we have. Really, all of our all of our employees that all my coworkers are highly qualified and professionals at what they do here for for the city residents and and generally. And we're lucky to have them, but we also need to make sure that we keep up with the competition, right, area communities, and make sure that we're we're paying them at market rates. So so that's what this was designed to do. We also add positions to some departments in need, maintain our our city service levels, which I would I would advocate are pretty high. It's also supporting park improvements, honoring most of the capital requests from departments, not all, and also funds, equipment, and facility replacement funds. These are these are important funds to replace equipment that we already have or repair a heater or a furnace over at the community center, which is something that's going to occur. So anyway, these are important funds to make sure that we continue to maintain that high level of funding that we have for them. We're also, and this is kind of a standby for Verona in a very good way, we're reducing our reliance on debt. One of the ways that we do that is that we used what's left over in prior in a prior year budget and then apply it towards one time capital purchases in usually it's the the next year's budget. So this is really using twenty twenty four's year end numbers there with the two point two million dollars. And then we take that and we apply that towards capital items in in twenty twenty six. So we're using two point two million dollars of that towards street and sidewalk programs, pavement rehab. We're also doing some park department projects using that that fund funding. We're continuing in our twenty two twenty six budget to fund public safety, EMS, public works, all of our departments, and the replacement equipment programs, which are funded through the levy. We're continuing to fund the facility replacement programs also through the levy. When you see levy, you should say this is not something we're borrowing for, which is great, saving on saving on interest. And lastly, we're maintaining our levy for our capital projects. So that's all that's all good news. We also have additional staffing or changes to positions at the police department, rec center, building inspector, public works and recreation. We're meeting the minimum funding for Verona Public Library. We're funding all day transit with Madison Metro, so continuing to fund it. That that program here just started at the last week of April, and and I, from what I gather, the D two line continues to get increased participation. So that's great. Debt's only used for large capital items and projects, which we'll talk about. We also have pressures within our operating budget, of course. Pressures like there's a minimum funding level for the library that that increased by fifty one thousand eight hundred and seventy two dollars. Our health insurance increased, nearly double digits for general employees, nine point two five percent, and then eleven point one seven for police. We had health insurance changes from single to family or additional employees with insurance. So sometimes it'll be the case that someone who has a single plan will transition to a family plan, those types of things. So we need to account for that. Wisconsin retirement system, up a quarter point for general employees and down point two one percent for protective employees. There's an increase in capital requests. That seems to happen every year now, but it is what it is. We're a growing city, right? Ongoing request for additional employees due to growth. I'll get into that a little bit more later. Maintaining and keeping up with market pressure on wages, again, keeping up with the Joneses, our neighbors, making sure that we're at market to attract talent. And information technology needs, we're addressing that in this budget as well. So that's that's great news as as well. Again, overall, as you know, as elected officials, you're you're putting together an amalgamation of competing interests and priorities within within the city and doing the best that we can to to balance all that. And again, I think my observation, we have a very collaborative discussions and environment to do that in. So here's our levy limit calculation. You start with the twenty twenty four payable to the twenty twenty five actual levy. So net new construction is adds five point four percent. So you see the nine hundred and five thousand dollar figure there. That's that's new revenue coming into the budget. And then you start to hit some of the deductions, two hundred and twenty three thousand for personal property aid. EMS, the change in formula brings that down a hundred and fifty thousand, but adds in, if if you approve the resolution tonight, thirty nine thousand four hundred and seventy four to do the levy limit adjustment, making our allowable levy seventeen million, three hundred and forty one thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars with which represents a total increase of seven hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. So. And again, at that very bottom bullet, if the D R O D O R catches us trying to exceed our levy limit, they'll make us pay it back in the following year. But we don't do that. So all good. Here's where the tax levy money is going. So you'll see the general fund, of course, is the is the largest player in there. And you'll see throughout the department narratives and just generally speaking, what what's going up in a lot of the departments are actually the personnel costs, given the the new compensation study implementation. So a lot of those and health insurance. So that's what's typically for a unit of government like us, that's what'll drive costs is personnel. You also see some increases to, you know, library, let's see here, metro transit, that's a big difference because we're funding the additional bus line now. Senior Center is going up by eight hundred and twenty eight, or I'm sorry, seventy one thousand. And let's see here, fire department's going up by a hundred and fifty thousand. So see, see the changes there. The the breakdown, just basically as a pie, what we do, I think these are actual like Gatsby like reporting type things that we have to do. So the general fund is seven point three million, which is forty two percent of the budget. And then debt service, twenty one point eight percent of the budget. And then you get into, you know, the library and fire department, et cetera. So that's where our levy dollars are going. And then the revenue to fund local government generally comes from property taxes, which is nearly fifty one percent of our revenues. And then we got transfers in state aid, shared revenue, intergovernmental revenues there at fifteen point four one percent. Applied funds, they're at fifteen percent, and then you'll see all the charges for services and fines and things like that 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 also fund the government. Here's our nonproperty tax revenue. Again, shared revenue went up. It used to be flat for twenty years or something like that, some some crazy amount of time there. Finally, you gotten around to adjusting it. Our highway aids are decreasing by a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars because of the county highway M project is falling off the five year rolling average of road construction for the city of Verona. So that was a big project. And as it's taken into account in that formula, as it falls off, it fell off. That's that's why our our revenue is decreasing for highway aids. We projected an increase of a hundred and six thousand in in interest on our investments. We also are projecting, given the pipeline of various developments that we have going in Verona at the moment, an increase of sixty eight thousand in building permit and planning fees. We also expect revenue to go up for recreation with beach revenues. I think they're being adjusted. The playground program and the opening of the community center for activities. So definitely expecting more revenue in in recreation. And lastly, it's a projected increase of ten thousand for the hotel motel room tax. Here's where the money goes. This is pretty common in most communities where half the money that you expend goes to public safety and the a bunch goes to public works. That's very typical of a municipal budget, half with with those two activities. So you also see in there general government, you know, general fund transfers, park and rec. The, let's see here, just your summary of the budget, the percent change in levy before TID is up four point eight one percent. And then the city mail mail rate is three point eight 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 one per thousand. So the percent change in rate is up, actually down a tenth of a percent. And then after TID, once we apply the TIDS into our calculations, it's up eight percent or seven percent, so up to eighteen million, six hundred and thirty three thousand. The city portion of the mill rate, this again is an estimate, we still have to get the other taxing authorities in, four point one, seven, seven, seven per thousand. Change in rate, two point oh two. On a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar home, nineteen hundred and twenty two dollars is the estimated city portion of the tax bill. And then last year it was eighteen hundred and eighty four. So it went up to your thirty eight dollars on a on a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar home. So. Okay, our tax rate's been going down over time. Again, I think part of the driver on this is not only the growth, but also the fact that our borrowing hasn't hit yet for some of the large projects that we have coming down the pike. So to include the the public works building and, you know, of of particular note. So it's been going down over time. And our proposed personnel changes in the twenty twenty six budget, remove a case manager and add a case manager, social worker. So this will be a more credential position. In the police, we're adding the community resource specialist position. So right now that's slotted in in a sworn officer position. So this person, this this is gonna have its own funding, so it'll be its own position. And it will also vacate that sworn officer position. So a sworn officer could get hired in that in that position. So. We're removing a building permit specialist and adding a building inspector. And for public works, add an admin assistant at fifty percent because the recreation assistant is moving to the community center. And then adding two engineering technicians, which we believe and hope will be funded from the inspection services that they perform on construction sites throughout the city.
Just to clarify, that was ninety five ninety five percent of their salary, correct? Or was it a hundred percent?
No, it was ninety.
Was it ninety or ninety five, Brian, in that one?
Ninety percent is.
Ninety percent, okay.
Okay, capital items funded with levy. We do have green initiatives continuing in the city of Verona. We have sixty thousand dollars dedicated to solar panels. Seven thousand dollars for stackable chairs in the council chambers, and that especially will help with elections. The police, we've got twenty five thousand dollars towards handguns, so twelve five out of the levy. And I think you'll see it again in in the next slide. Furniture are being purchased. We're looking to paint the East Verona Avenue light poles. The blue light poles are starting to rust significantly. There's ten thousand towards a used scissor lift and an air compressor at the public works building, which will be portable in case we need to move it. For parks, you'll see a few things on there, a backstop net, splash pad fixture, have to unpick up with a plow attachment. Building inspector on SUV and with charging equipment, it'll be an E V. And then you'll see we're funding our revolving loan funds for the various departments, both for equipment and and facilities. With the revolving loan fund, here's the other half of the the handguns, the safety equipment, computers, patrol vehicles. Those are two patrol vehicles. That's a lot, very much a topic of discussion across municipalities where patrol vehicles anymore are getting close to a hundred thousand dollars a piece to buy and outfit them. So just be aware of that. Public Works, a patrol truck, tool cat with a grapple bucket, wheel loader, and a mini excavator, which is split out among the utilities and the general fund. Getting a mower for parks, a gator and a dump truck. And lastly, some concrete and sidewalk replacement at City Hall. So again, that's so that's why it's so important to fund those equipment and facility revolving loan funds annually. Capital items with other sources. So a lot of these are going to be, well, public works, we're using the the fund balance left over from twenty twenty four towards towards pavement rehab, sidewalks, replacements and additions. We're installing pedestrian crossings throughout the city. We have a traffic safety committee that that reviews requests that come in. Looking at reconstructing North Schuman and North North Schuman and North Marietta. Replacing the garage doors on the public works building and then looking at, this I think is for the plan, the sixty thousand dollars for county trunk highway, P B and American Way intersection improvements, and that's using TID eight funds. So that's not the general fund. You'll see some some parks, typical replacements for playground and such things. There is one in there, though, to replace the skate park. It's currently allocated at five hundred thousand dollars. There's also sixty seven thousand dollars put towards the community center for renovations and improvements to to continue to make it usable for city residents. For fire, data computers and portable radio replacements. Senior Center, they're they're doing a office conversion and upgrade. They're carpeting and flooring upgrade, and they're also getting a generator so that the senior center can be used as a warming shelter or emergency shelter should should something happen in the city. And lastly, two hundred and five thousand towards equipment replacement funds. Our borrowing plan at the moment is one point two five million towards the pedestrian and bike trail. And then one point one million towards Mark Drive Street improvements for at least a preliminary total of two point three five million. We also need to be cognizant, there are probably a lot of TID eleven projects, which is the the epic TID that are coming down the pike for water infrastructure, water and sewer, potentially water tower involved, you know, things like that. So just be aware that that's kind of hanging out there, too. With with those those types of purchases in particular, they they rely on the TID for funding. So they don't actually come out of the general fund for the most part, but there may be some percentages within some of that infrastructure, which would not be TID eligible, and we'd have to we'd have to fund it through our our borrowing plan. So just be aware of that. We don't know what any of that looks like at the moment, but we'll we'll get there soon enough. So for debt service, we have five million dollars exactly that we're paying next year on principal and one million, one million and six thousand dollars in interest. So that's what our debt service is. And you'll see again the breakdown of that debt. Six hundred and twenty six thousand comes out of those TID districts. Some of them, some of it is utilities, like water, sewer and storm sewer. And then applied to debt service, our levy is three point seven eight one million. So and then you'll see Brian down at the bottom there, our finance director, has impact fees applying to other to offset other debt. Our geo debt, we're do government, general obligation debt, we're doing really well. The state of Wisconsin has a policy of five percent of our EQV, our equalized value. As the debt limit, the city chooses to be more conservative in that respect. It's at three point seven five percent. And so of the allowable debt, a hundred and seventy six million, we'll say we we have thirty two point seven million out, which is eighteen point six two of the city's maximum debt, which you'll see right here in this line chart. Our allowable debt continues to to rise as the city grows in value. And at the moment, anyway, our our debt, our geo debt is keeps falling. So so that's where that's at. Per capita, we're now at or under about two thousand dollars per person in the city for debt, where in twenty, let's say, twenty eighteen nineteen, we were more than more than double that. Here's our unassigned fund balance as a percent of general fund expenditures. As I said, that two point two million here, that's where it's showing up. So in that twenty twenty four budget, it came, it skipped a year, and then it was two point two million here in twenty six. Our minimum percent of general fund expenditures, our target range, as you see there on the slide, is twenty five to thirty five percent. We strive to never go below thirty five because it affects our our bond rating, and that's what's getting us a double A one bond rating right now, which is great. Looking ahead, again, just to recap, library minimum funding next year, we're gonna, we'll be talking about what EMS funding looks like, given the current discussion on whether to combine or not into an EMS fire district. Icing payment continues until twenty 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 thirty three at fifty thousand. We'll always probably be asking for additional positions as we continue to grow. We're continuing to not let replacement funds decrease, but there's increasing pressure on that. And then again, we're gonna want to keep up with our wage study as we proceed forward to continue to be competitive for talent and and retain good people. So cost increases for wages and benefits. And then we're we're looking at future debt. Here's our timeline. Tonight is the presentation. Budget amendments are due November sixth at nine o'clock. I think that's a Thursday. The council meeting will, on November tenth, will have a public hearing. And we are planning on taking action on budget amendments, if there are any, and action on the budget and levy that night. This is the budget amendment form. Again, Alders, I guess what what you need to do is, if you if you do want to, if you're planning on making an amendment, I would ask you to consult with either Brian or myself. And you're gonna wanna, you have to, if you if you're gonna make an amendment, it has to be budget neutral. You can't just increase costs and not decrease them somewhere else. You actually have to choose, you know, what what to cut, if that's where what you want to do. But but anyway, feel free to consult either either Brian or I, and we'll lead you through the form. And did I make my time?
I got, we got like a minute and a half for the council meeting start. So if someone has a question that can take, I don't know, forty five seconds, feel free to ask it. So if someone has a question that can take, I don't know, 45 seconds, feel free to ask it or, or ask offline, I guess.
And that's, that's what I would encourage too, Mayor. If you do have questions on any of this, Mr. Lammers and I, we've been at every meeting and know, know it pretty well. But feel free to ask.
Great. So unless anyone has anything else on the presentation of the proposed 2026 city budget, I will move to item six, which is adjournment. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
I move.
Motion to adjourn by Alder Helmke, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Swanson. All those in favor of adjourning the committee of the whole meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And we are adjourned at 6:59 PM. I'll see you all in 30 seconds. I call the order of the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, October 27th, 2025. At 7:01 PM, we'll begin with the Fledge of Legions.
Fledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll have the roll.
Helmke.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Lidle.
Here.
Tucker Long.
Here.
Keller.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Oops.
Present.
Harrison.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. We can, we have quorum, so we can proceed with the agenda. We will move on to item four, which is public comment. If any members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to do so. Is this the, I think this is the right agenda. It was right on my monitor, I don't know. Okay, we're good. You can proceed when, when ready.
Okay. I think this is on, right?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Leila Sanyar and I live on Holiday Court. I've lived in the city of Verona. Please print. I could have skipped that I live here. Thanks. I've lived in the city of Verona for 40 years. I'm here to offer support and hope for the future for our wonderful city. As a retired teacher, parent and serious proponent for all of us to make this world a better place for kids as they grow up, I'm excited to see progress in Verona. The Common Council has put more thought and financial support into sustainability projects over the last number of years. From native plantings to solar panels on city buildings to charging station and food scrap collection. We are now, have now clearly arrived at a better place. I know that future planning for the city is well underway and ready for a vote. As you plan for the budget, I would like to hope that all decisions made from here on out address attention on clean energy, reducing the carbon footprint and education for our community. In other words, it would be wonderful if decisions moving ahead fit under the umbrella of sustainability and the future for all of us. The funds that you designated up to this point are of course, great. But I would like to see environmental and sustainability issues be front and center when adding to the allocation of funds. So again, I'm sharing my appreciation for what has already been started and my plea that this continue and be proportionally increased annually. Our future and the support for our children as they grow is critical. Thank you.
Thank you. We are still in public comment. So if any other members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to do so.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dana Berry and I'm going to sign this first. Let's see. 312 Monte Cristo. Okay. As you all know, my husband Bob and I are the residents at 312 Monte Cristo Circle, which backs up to the Bacchus property that is being considered for multi-family apartments and town home housing, 260 units. First of all, I just want to share, I'm a bit of a math nerd. I, my first career was working with data, working with numbers, number crunching, forecasting also, which I really took a lot of pleasure in. So I do have a math and numbers background and a business background. You've all received an email that I sent to you today because I was curious. I feel like when it comes to this project and the city in general, we seem to, and I'm not sure where this data comes from, but we seem to assume that there's a very low, almost negligible vacancy rate among apartments in Madison. And that if we just keep building apartments, that they'll get filled and that's not a problem. So I dug into this in detail yesterday and I wanted to share my findings with you. First of all, I went to the websites of 34 different apartment properties and townhome properties in Verona and just right outside Verona. I think the, the total number of units that these properties account for, I think is about 90 to 95% of numbers I've seen in the envisioned Verona plan. So I think we have a pretty good representation of what's out there right now. And for each apartment property, I looked at the number of units that they were promoting right now. Now, to qualify this, most of them said they are available right now or in a week or two. And then there were also some that said they'd be available in a month. So the numbers that I saw were that, let's see, out of 4,044 units existing, the number of available units was 261. That was as of yesterday. That calculates to a vacancy rate of 6.5%. Now, I learned a little bit because I didn't know on what is considered, you know, a high vacancy rate, a low vacancy rate, et cetera. So I think I included on your exhibit, and I'll restate this, and I got this off AI, I confess. A good apartment vacancy rate typically falls between 5 to 10%, indicating a balance between available rental units and demand. Rates below 5% may suggest a shortage of rental options, while rates above 10% could indicate potential issues with the property or market. I will also add that of the units that I saw, I would say, my best guess is about half of them were offering between one and two months of free rent. So I'm sensing that we actually don't have a shortage of apartments. Now, we may have a shortage of apartments at certain price levels or certain sizes, which I'm going to thoroughly dig into and see exactly, you know, what the inventory is currently for all of those. I'm bringing this up because I also saw in the envisioned Verona plan that Verona stated that we, we have 190 acres of land left in, in Verona that we can build on. I urge you to consider very carefully what is the best use of that land. Is it single family homes, which we seem to have a shortage of at certain price points? Or is it to build more apartments when we already have a 6.5% vacancy? I did another calculation where I project the, I projected a number of things, but I used assumptions in the envisioned Verona about population growth in Verona over the next seven years. Sorry, five years. I assumed a 3% growth rate from here on out, which is in line with what the plan contains. I also looked at the increasing numbers of people renting instead of purchasing. And so I built in that growth rate, which turned out to be about half a percent per year. I also looked at the average number of residents who live in apartments, which ties back to that, the 31% number back in 2020. And then I also remember through my conversations with people, talking about how there could be as many as 1,000, 1,000 apartment units coming to Verona soon. If I make the assumption that those would all happen over the next 12 months or so and that they could actually rent those out, given the population growth trends, we could have vacancy rates close to 15%. So I think that, you know, and I'm sure eventually they would get filled over the years. But to me, that would indicate a concern for people that currently own and manage apartment properties in Verona. I can't imagine that they are happy about adding 1,000 units to Verona. So let's see if I have any other. I think that is it. I shared all the information. So just so you know, I'm going to continue to refine this and I'll share whatever information I find with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still in the public comment portion of the meeting. So if anyone else would like to speak, now would be the time to do so.
Just quickly sign in here. Hi, I'm Amy Armstrong. I've lived in the Verona area for almost as long as Leila, 37 years. I just wanted also to put in a good word for the sustainability and environmental projects that the city has been taking on. And that the, the city, the Common Council and the Sustainability Task Force have really done some positive work and I'm hoping that you will continue to support that financially and with PR, that kind of thing. I hope that Verona will continue that work in that area to make Verona a more energy efficient and environmentally friendly city with a view to the future for our children and grandchildren. We're surrounded by other cities that are doing similar things and we really should be keeping up with them or maybe even passing them. So, so that, that is my, my hope and I'll get my address on here now. Thank you.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so.
All right. My name's Bob Cravens. I'm Dana's husband and I guess data nerd number two, maybe. You know, she mentioned about vacancy rates. I don't want to steal that, but I do want to say that, you know, we're collecting a lot of data, you know, as a family. We both love data and we find that a lot of this, getting high quality data, isn't necessarily the easiest thing. And as we start to gather this data, I want to make a platform so that, you know, you as the Common Council can access this data easily and the community can access it a little easier. I know that you have the Envision Verona project and that's collecting some surveys and you've got some data going. But I think it goes so much farther. The Envision Verona, for example, the population model that's in that just assumes like a linear 2% to 4% gain over the next, whatever, years. There's better models. And so as I put together and create these models, I actually got the envisionverona.com website. So it's the same name, but it's dot com. You can go there and I'm going to start putting the data that we're collecting on that website. And again, my goal is to gain high quality data, like Dana's already mentioned, she's gathered that. Population models, vacancy rates. I want to make it interactive so that maybe the community can, as I live in the north neighborhood, I can subscribe to anything going on in my north neighborhood and then get maybe surveys and all kinds of things like that. The other thing is, you know, the end goal is to enable some data-driven decisions. So when you make a decision about whether something should be multifamily or single family, you have data that's helping you drive those decisions. And I heard talk about sustainability, another great thing, right? Where's the data? We should have data on sustainability and that should help drive our decisions. I'm going to stick around until the council meeting ends. And if anybody wants to provide some feedback or if later on you want to provide feedback, you can go to envisionverona.com. I'll probably have a comment form there that you can submit and then it will directly come to me. You can ask us for data, maybe you don't have data on certain things or you don't have high quality data on certain things. You know, go ahead and ask. I'm not afraid to dig into a bunch of data and look. I'm retired kind of, and so is my wife, so we have some spare time. Not exactly what we want to do with our spare time, but we are willing to do this as, you know, it helps you guys in the community. So I'll stick around if you guys have questions. Thanks.
Thank you. We are still in public comment.
Hi, everyone. My name is Melanie Hunt. I'm here with my husband Joe. We are located at 2803 North County Road M. We're here to discuss the Bacchus, the Bacchus project. I know a lot of people, I've already talked about it, that, that land is currently commissioned or zoned as single family homes. We understood that that was going to be the case when we purchased our home in 2017. Now the rezoning is under consideration for urban residential, which does affect a lot of people in our community, but specifically and uniquely our property because we will be the only property that is level with that 260 unit apartment. We have been through a lot in the construction that has happened as part of this 10-year project. And so far, like it hasn't been horrible. 2017 through 2019 was pretty bad for us. I believe I sent an email to each of you this morning, kind of outlining specifically how this uniquely affect us. Everything was already settled when we came in 2017 as far as like the engineering and the layout and how everything was going to happen. And no one probably could have anticipated the damage that was taken to our property specifically. Our first flooding was July, we bought, we closed on our house in May 26th, 2017. Our first flooding was July 13th. We thought we could handle that one. July 17th, we had the power cut to our property. And because we were knee deep in our basement and all of our appliances were underwater, the water was actually pouring in from, from the construction and the redirecting of the water from the construction. The fire department came and helped us pump out as much as they could in that space. We lost trees in that, in that moment on our line, on our property line that would protect us from this new project as well. If you look at the pictures, I know it looks very similar, like the same story over and over and over again. But I actually have all the pictures with timestamps within my photos with Google Photos. So 2017, it started again in May of 2018, ran all the way through. We had three other incidents in 2018. In January of 2019, we actually were warm here and so it thawed out and flooded us again. It not only flooded the corner property, which I think the reason that the water is actually directed that way is because there's a corner piece on that property that is part of the watershed, the Sugar River watershed that can't be touched by either this project or by us. And so water has been directed there, but that, that small piece of land can't handle that amount of water. So we spent $15,000 plus regrading our land to redirect the water because everything from the bluff on the 2801 North County property comes down on our property. The bluff behind our house, which is where the backside of this project will be, they're actually going to clear out all the trees there except for a couple that they have tagged as beautiful. And so that will bring more water to our property. We actually put a cement slab. We actually put a cement slab in the front of our house to redirect from our foundation. We have a French drain in the front of our yard to redirect to the back property. And yeah, many, many other things. And also did some, what, papering? It's, I don't know the exact name of it, in our basement because our house was built in 1901. We are one of the original homesteads in Verona. And so we did that and all, and, and kind of resolved that problem with the anticipation that we may have to deal with that a little bit. Once this property was going to be developed, we knew it was like the last phase in this construction. There's a difference between dealing with a developer who's building maybe one or two single-family homes that are right next to our property than dealing with a large corporation that's actually going to build this many units. Right now, according to the plan, is 15 feet off of our property line on the one side. We will literally lose our entire view. We will have people right on top of us and I know some people love living like that, but that's not really what we planned for as well as, so the water piece is a huge thing for us and we can't personally financially take that again. It, we, we will, we can't. The other piece that I want to point out tonight, I mean, I have like, I have lots of concerns, but most of them are for like, if you decide to change the zoning on the property, then I would like to be able to address those at that time. But the other piece to this is the safety piece for us. We are the only ones down there. We have one neighbor that's right up on the hill and we have a through line on our property that leads right to the, right up our driveway to the bike path. And I would guarantee you that they're not, they're going to take the shortcut versus going around to come through. And so now we have people that are going to be on our property as well. Now I can't predict how many, like, how that's going to be, but that is a safety concern for us at, at our home. So I think that's everything that I got, but I don't have data. I just have a lot of like experience with this. And also I would like to say, Dana mentioned the thousand apartments that are going to be built right by that area. It's not in Verona. It's actually right in that spot. So the Old Monks is sanctioned or rezoned right now for apartments. There is 200 and some units plus the townhomes going by us and then another group of apartments that are at the Bible, right by the Bible church. That's a lot of units in a very small area that increases a lot of things for us, traffic, bike path traffic, safety, all those things. So I would like you to consider all those things when you're thinking about rezoning this area and wait for the right, the right developer to show up. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so if any other members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to do so.
Hi, my name is Jeff Johnson. I've lived in Verona 38 years. I'm also here to thank the council and the city of Verona for the sustainability efforts in the past year. I'm specifically going to mention a couple of items. The solar panels on the City Hall Fire Department, the new charging stations that folks are working on, and also the creation of the Assistant City Administrative Position, which then can have a focus on sustainability, which has really been helpful in moving our efforts forward. I guess lastly, the city of Verona's work efforts with the Friends of Badger Mill Creek and the Ice Age Trail Alliance on the South Main Park. When you come in from M from Verona, we have been working, the different Friends Group on clearing off the invasives and then the city has been helpful then in hauling those cleared-up brush and trees away. So eventually that area is going to be planted in a prairie, so it's going to look great. So I want to thank the council for that, but we all know sustainability is a marathon and we're probably just getting started. So along those lines, I'd like to encourage the council to consider additional solar panels for city buildings as we move forward. And when it comes to like solar and other type of sustainability efforts, as we work on our comprehensive plan, even though building codes cannot require those types of things, it seems like the only way to do that is to include the proper incentives. So you incentivize people with their new buildings to perhaps adopt sustainability. So that would require, you know, that type of work effort to include those proper incentives. I guess the last thing I would ask for is when we have our nature areas like Badger Mill Creek, you know, that's a little different than a park, but it's all kind of in the park budget. So in the future, if we could have some dedicated funds for the nature areas so that when issues come up with them, they can be addressed. And by that I mean, sometimes, you know, we'll have invasives come in and it's too much for the Friends Group to do and the city folks are tied up on other projects where if we had some line item money and we could hire someone else to come in and then kind of deal with that problem so that it doesn't get too big. It's kind of like when you have creeping Charlie in your yard. You don't wait till the whole yard is filled with creeping Charlie. You kind of deal with it when it's a small problem. So I think you've been doing a great job and I just want to encourage us and you folks to continue with that. Thank you.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so if any other members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to do so.
Hello again. I'm not sure you're going to be able to see this very well, but I made it anyway because I think it helps illustrate what I'm going to be talking about. Thanks for your time. My name is Scott Side. My wife Kelly and I live at 308 Monte Cristo Circle. So we're one of the homes that is adjacent to the Bacchus Property. And obviously we've been thinking about it a lot and a couple of the issues that I'm thinking about is how many apartments are enough in the city and the surrounding areas? And to the extent they're enough and to the extent you have a proposal to amend a comprehensive plan to put even more apartments in, how do you make that decision? On what basis do you think about it and what sort of analysis do you go through? So as I think some of you know, a little more than 10 years ago, your predecessor on the common council believed that controlled growth in the city was important enough that they passed a resolution to limit the number of multifamily unit approvals going forward to a target range of 35 to 50 units per year, with the exception of mixed-use projects, downtown projects, and age-restricted housing. That thing is now referred to as the residential phasing policy and the planning department makes reference to that phasing policy every time they give you an introduction to a new proposal. It's always stated in there. And I think it's stated in there for a reason. I think it's there because it's a reminder to you what your predecessors believed and that controlled growth is important for the city. Obviously, this is not 35 to 50 units per year. This represents projects that have been recently completed, that are being built, that are, that have been approved or are being considered in Verona and nearby areas. Add them up and you get almost 2,100 units in Verona. That's like 40 years' worth and another 425 nearby. Now this isn't even taking into consideration all the work that's been done in downtown Verona. I haven't been able to track down those numbers, but these were somewhat easy to find. So it's a lot. So I think in general, it's easy, it's fair to say that Verona is doing its fair share in making sure that affordable housing is available. In fact, I think we're probably reaching a point where we're reaching almost 1,000 per year in some cases. And granted, times have changed, but I think the benefits of controlled growth and thoughtful growth still remain. I think it was a great idea recently for the city of Verona to implement the Envision Verona project. I think there was a lot of information gleaned from that and some of it was a little bit Two clear messages from those results were that the citizens of Verona want fewer apartments. I think they feel overwhelmed with the number that are coming in and they want more affordable single-family homes. A tougher ask, but I think something that the city should continue to strive for. And in thinking about all of this and the Bacchus Property and the fact that it's looking me in, in the face every day when I look out the back window of the house, it seems to me that the Bacchus Property Project is almost going to be a litmus test for the common council. Because you've got these two different forces. You've got this force of, of continued development of more and more apartments and developers striking while the iron is hot with the city of Verona because it seems that, boy, if you make a proposal, they'll say yes. Versus the comprehensive plan that's been in place for decades. The comprehensive plan that has identified the Bacchus Property as a place where single-family homes should be built. That's the type of neighborhood that makes sense in that area. That's where the experts have seen that property as being best used. Probably in part because of the fact that there are single-family homes to the south of it, there are single-family homes to the east of it, and there are single-family homes to the west with even more planned to the west. To the north, there are no single-family homes, but there's this huge wetland area now that keeps getting bigger and bigger and it's teeming with wildlife. A couple of you have been kind enough to come over to view the property and I hope the rest of you do too, just so you can get a better feel for what you're going to be considering in the weeks and months to come. But it seems like every time one of you come over, the Sand Hill cranes happen to fly over, which is actually kind of cool. I wish I could take credit for that, but. So it'll be a litmus test because I think it'll reveal where the common council's values really are placed. A, will you listen to the citizens of Verona who have spoken clearly about their preferences and be more selective when considering both the number and location of apartment units? Will you be mindful of that resolution enacted by the previous common council for the purpose of controlling growth to retain the character of Hometown USA? I think for some of us, we're beginning to wonder if it should be called something other than Hometown USA and more like Temp Town USA. Will you listen to neighboring landowners who will be affected most by these developments and have the intestinal fortitude to say no once in a while when it's not a good fit? Will you honor the justifiable reliance placed on the comprehensive plan by neighboring homeowners who have relied on that plan for decades when they purchased their property? And tell developers, you know what, we really like your plan, but just not here. It doesn't fit within what we see for Verona in the future. Or will you choose to set aside all of those things and us and your constituents and forge ahead, allowing huge real estate companies with hundreds of millions of dollars in private equity money and billions in assets to buy up Verona and build even more apartments? Now let me talk to you a little bit about how I'm thinking you might want to consider making one of the key decisions for the Bacchus Property Project. And I've thought about it a lot and, and I think because we've relied on that comprehensive plan so much, that when you make the decision as to whether or not you should grant the application to amend the comprehensive plan, to change it from single-family homes to multifamily, I think the best way to think about that is to consider whether or not there's a compelling reason to amend that plan. And if there's not a compelling reason, why do it? I can only come up with two reasons for you to approve the amendment and neither one is compelling at all. They're just reasons. One is because the owner and the developer want to cash in on the, on the opportunity, strike while the iron's hot. And the second is the notion that Dane County needs more affordable housing. But neither of those reasons support amending the comprehensive plan for this development on this property. In fact, the only compelling reasons in connection with making that decision are ones that are consistent with saying no to amending the comprehensive plan. First, for decades, local consultants with expertise in city planning have consistently identified the Bacchus Property as best suited for a single-family home neighborhood. Comprehensive plans are created for a reason. They're meant to be relied upon and for decades, all of us who bought our homes in that area justifiably relied on that designation when we moved there. The Bacchus Property is surrounded by single-family homes on the east and the south and by new single-family homes to the west with more to come. And on the north side is a very large and growing wetland that's teeming with wildlife. And all of these are compelling reasons. One more compelling reason, I think, is that the owner of the property purchased the property knowing what the comprehensive plan was. Some of you have stopped over to visit our homes to see for yourselves how the proposed project might impact the neighborhood and us, and we really appreciate your interest. We hope that the rest of you will stop over as well because I think you'll get a much better idea of how to make your decision. It's very different looking at a, a Google satellite map or, you know, one of the, the developers' renderings than if you actually go stomping around in the grass and take a look, okay, where's that 40-foot wall going to be? Wow, it's a lot closer than I thought. Given the fragile nature of the wetland in the north and the fact that to the east and west are single-family home neighborhoods, it seems obvious to me, and I think it would be obvious to pretty much any other resident of Verona, that the best course of action is to tread lightly on that parcel and stick to the comprehensive plan. As stated previously, we recognize that comprehensive plans are not written in stone, but I think we can all agree that they're written for a reason for us to plan and to rely on. Can they be amended? Of course they can. That's being proposed right now. But it seems to me that they only should be amended if there's a compelling reason to do it and that's my point, there is none. In fact, the only compelling arguments for doing anything are the ones that support staying consistent with that comprehensive plan. You may also be thinking that you've seen a draft of the proposed land use for the Bacchus Property in the new comprehensive plan, which switches things up a little bit. And that proposed plan conveniently designates that Bacchus Property as mid-density now. But unlike the local consultants that prepared the current comprehensive plan, I highly doubt the consultants from downtown Chicago who envisioned the new map for the new plan have ever stood in the grass in that spot surrounded by single-family homes and the wetland teeming with wildlife and thought to themselves, man, this is the perfect spot for a massive apartment Doesn't seem completely counterintuitive to everybody, I can't believe it's just me, to ignore all of that and shoehorn a 260-unit apartment complex into that strip of land. If the owner of the Bacchus Property isn't ready or willing to develop the property as intended, so be it. The entity that owns that property and the individuals that I can tell that are connected with it are very sophisticated businesspeople with a lot of real estate experience. They know what they're doing. If it doesn't work out for them, they could sell it. If it's not as profitable as they thought it might be, maybe they paid too much for it. Either way, the owner knew what they were getting into when they bought it because they knew what the comprehensive plan provided. It's okay to say no to the proposal and send the message to the owner and/or the future owner of that Bacchus Property that the city is going to stick to the comprehensive plan because it makes the best sense for Verona. A final thought for tonight, you can say no to this. You can say no to this project. It won't harm the owner if you say no. They bought the property knowing what they were getting into, nor will it harm the developer. This is what they do. It's a cost of doing business, and just ask them, business is very, very good. And perhaps most importantly, you won't harm future apartment dwellers. There are plenty of wonderful places to build them, and there will soon be many more to choose from. So again, thanks for your time. I appreciate your attention. We'll continue to think about this and provide you with as much information and context so you can make a well-informed decision that benefits all of us as citizens of Verona. So I'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. We are still in public comment, so if anyone else wishes to speak, now would be the time to do so. Not seeing anyone approaching the microphone, I will just quick send out my usual reminder that the city council cannot comment on anything that's not on the agenda. We appreciate and welcome all feedback, but members of the public can bring stuff up that we can't talk about. So again, we appreciate all the feedback, but there's stuff that will be on a future agenda, but we can't talk about it now. But still seeing nobody approaching the table, we will move on to item five, which is approved the minutes from the October 13th, 2025 common council meeting. Questions, comments, corrections, or motions to approve? Alder Harrison.
Move to approve.
Motion by Alder Harrison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Homke. Last chance for corrections. All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 13th, 2025 common council meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the minutes are approved. We will move on to item six, mayor's business. I have one item for you. It's under six A, appointments to the community development authority. Just a bit of explanation on this one. We have not had a CDA project in years, and so I haven't been reappointing people generally to the committee because I don't necessarily know what future projects the CDA might take on, and so I kind of wanted to appoint people based on what that project might be. However, in regards to the Argus property, which is due to receive some county funding, the county has insisted that we need to have the CDA authorize the Dane County Housing Authority to operate in Verona. I'm not a lawyer. I question the county's interpretation of their own statutes. However, at this point, I don't want it to be the city that screws it up by not having the CDA approve it. So I have submitted three names, and they should be, you should have a handout, but they are Mills Harrison, Linnea Matulat, and Jess Gunderson. And so I guess I would ask for your approval of these people to the CDA if the council is so inclined. Alder Swanson.
I guess, point of order, do we have to move to approve them individually, or can we approve them as a block?
I think we can approve them as a block.
All right. Well, then I move to approve all three.
All right. Motion by Alder Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Homke. All those in favor appointing the three individuals to the community development authority, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion passes. We'll move on to item seven, which is announcements. Any announcements from the council? Seeing no announcements, we'll move on to item eight, which is administrator's report. Mr. Olick.
Thank you, mayor. Two announcements tonight. One, Barry Entos was at the Public Works Department last week, starting to conduct interviews on the needs space, space needs analysis, part of what was approved at the prior council meeting. So hopefully, we have a preliminary report by the next council meeting on November 10th. Also, both Anne, the Assistant City Administrator, and Catherine, the Community Development Specialist, got an email back from Soul Smart, and they are honored to award Verona a Soul Smart Silver Designation plaque to commemorate our achievement. So what this means is we submitted ourselves for an award, shall we say? However, it's, they analyze our criteria that we use, in particular with how the building inspector is trained and approvals are done for green projects. Also, they took a peek at our zoning code. So this kind of speaks to the sustainability comments we heard a little bit earlier in public comment. It's one of those things that Verona's kind of sort of been doing all along, which is good. And there's, of course, a gold certification, platinum, you know, sky's the limit, but it shows that as a community, we have been doing, you know, green-based approvals as far as our system goes, and there's more work to do, but a lot more to accomplish. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Olick? Seeing no questions, we will move on to item nine, which is engineers' report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. For the Country View Road realignment projects, for, upon construction is continuing in Phase Four, and paving is in progress on Phases Two and Three as we get close to ending, get close to the end of the construction season, the multi-use path will now be paved in 2026. And for SSM Health, utility construction is continuing on Valley Road and along southbound Paoli Street, and southbound Paoli Street access remains closed. So with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Fisher? Seeing no questions, we will move on to item 10, which is committee reports. First up, we have 10A, which is finance committee. Alder Homke.
Yeah, I make a motion for payment in the bills in the amount of $681,813.52.
Motion by Alder Homke. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Harrison. Alder Homke.
Yeah, there are two major payments. The first is to AECom in the amount of $184,592 for engineering services, and the second is to Walter, Inc., in the amount of $171,896 for well-three generator.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Homke.
Yeah, I move to approve resolution number 25-028, amending city fee schedule.
Motion by Alder Homke. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Harrison. Alder Homke.
The proposed amended fee schedule makes routine updates to the city's fee schedule. Staff recommended approval.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this motion? Otherwise.
Yes, are these just like adjustments for like inflation, like year-over-year kind of adjustments, or?
Mr. Olick.
That's a good way to say it. Every year, we tell the department directors who are involved in this fee schedule to look at your current fees, look around surrounding communities, you know, make an adjustment for market rate, and that way, we're keeping up on our fee schedule.
Okay. Thank you.
Alder Keller.
I had a question about the deck fees. As someone who might need to replace her deck, I just am trying to understand where those, where the line items are lining up. Is it the deck fees that are changing, the breakdown changing, or was it? I'd have to, let me pull it up. Sorry, let me scroll. Page 15 on the budget, there's like, the first line item is electric service disconnect and reconnect, and then the next one is deck permit, but like, the line items aren't really lining up. So I was just hoping for a little clarification.
Mr. Lammers, do you have any, anything on that one? Did it not line up in the packet?
In 2025, it said $150 a unit, and then in 2026, I think it says residents 125, commercials 250, and then it was $300. I'm assuming that that is deck permit and not electrical service disconnect or reconnect.
I'm pulling it out.
Yeah, I see what you're, I see what you're saying on the way it lines up.
I'm just a little confused about how, you know, when you go across the, it's probably a formatting issue. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding how that's changing.
I mean, there's, there's a, my interpretation is that you're interpreting it correctly. We could also, if you're not comfortable, we could proceed and just approve these.
As long as, as long as the way that I'm thinking about it is.
I'll verify that. We can always bring it back to.
If it turns out to be different.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments on the fee schedule? Alder Swanson.
This may be inane and somewhat nitpicky, but I think it would greatly improve readability if any changed line items in the future were highlighted, just to draw attention to viewers who otherwise might lose track of something that they didn't realize was getting changed.
And lines are super helpful.
Lines would also be great.
Yeah, it doesn't have great eyesight. It's nice when you can just kind of trace with your finger. Other questions or comments on the fee schedule? Sorry, let me find my spot in the packet again. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number 25-028, amending the city fee schedule, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Homke.
I move to approve resolution number 25-029, approving the 2026 Fitch Verona EMS operating and capital budgets.
Motion by Alder Homke. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder, Alder Homke.
The finance committee reviewed and discussed the 2026 Fitch Verona EMS operating and capital budgets with Fitch Verona EMS chief, Patrick Anderson. That's all it says.
I guess just to explain the process a little bit, the city of Verona receives EMS services through the Fitch Verona EMS district. The EMS district recently had a meeting where they presented the budget. The budget has been passed along to us. My interpretation of it, and just my opinion, is that it's in line with previous budgets, and it continues to provide a high level of service at a reasonable price. And there is also the added benefit that with the new, the new funding formula that we recently agreed to, that the city of Verona residents pay a little bit less money. So we're getting a similar, better level of service for less money. So I think it's, I think we should do it. And also EMS does, EMS just has to work. But other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number 25-029, approving the 2026 Fitch Verona EMS operating capital budget, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Alder Homke.
I move to approve resolution number 25-030, approving exceeding the levy limit for the joint EMS districts.
Motion by Alder Homke. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Keller, I believe. Alder Homke.
This resolution allows a municipality participating in a joint EMS district to exceed the levy limit if it's approved by all participating municipalities. The criteria are outlined in Wisconsin statute 66.0602, subparenes, three, subparen h, the state, and state, the following criteria must be met to exceed the municipal levy limit. The total charges assessed by the joint EMS district cannot increase more than the Consumer and Price Index plus 2%. The CPI for this calculation is certified as 2.7%. Therefore, the allowable increase is 4.7%. The submitted 2026 Fitch Verona EMS budget increases the total charges to all three municipalities by 4.69%. The increase in the amount to pay for such charges would cause the municipality to exceed the levy limit. The city of Verona's EMS portion decreased by $110,174, which represents a 13.08% decrease. As part of the new EMS agreement, the calculation for the change resulted in a decrease of $149,648. The difference of $39,474 is the amount the city can exceed the municipal levy limit. All municipalities served by the joint district must adopt a resolution in favor of exceeding the limit. For the city to qualify, the city of Pittsburgh and town of Verona must also pass supporting resolution. One caveat is a municipality that passes a supporting resolution is not required to take the adjustment on their levy limit worksheet. Also, the adjustment is base building, meaning if the adjustment is taken, the adjustment is permanent and will not need to be removed in future years, even if budgets decrease or the city doesn't qualify for the adjustment. Therefore, the levy limit adjustments provide the city with current and future funding flexibility. Because the request meets the above criteria and provides budgeting flexibility in future years, staff recommended approval of the resolution.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of resolution number 25-030, approving exceeding the levy limit for the joint EMS district, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion passes. Anything further from finance?
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I would ask Mara Trustee if she could advance the slide on our monitors. Excellent, thank you. And then I would ask the city council for unanimous consent to consider item 12C out of order. It is at the very end of the agenda, and I think this will be a quick, be a quick one before we go into our series of closed sessions. Any objections on moving 12C to right now? Seeing, seeing no objections, we will consider 12C, which is a discussion on possible action regarding the Whispering Cove's letter of credit. Mr. Olick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of updates between when this was listed on the agenda and tonight. So I received confirmation from FDG that the sluice gate and hatches for Whispering Coves will be completed by the end of the week by Parisi. And they finalized an access agreement with fiduciary, fiduciary, so they can, should be set as it relates to their portion of the scope of their project. So again, this is an indicator that what's going on at Whispering Coves is affecting other, other projects. To date, what we know is most of the public infrastructure was installed. They had a, they had a summer deadline. I don't know exactly what date it was, but basically, they've blown past that, that deadline to install the sluice gate and hatch, hatch covers, and also the wet well, and pavement. There's some additional pavement that needs to occur at that, that property. Construction halted. Behind the scenes, they've coordinated now with Parisi, and I do have confirmation from Parisi that they feel as though they have a sufficient amount that'll allow them to complete the sluice gate and hatch installation. So, so anyway, on their end of things, they feel as though they've, they've settled up with FDG. The only outstanding item is the additional pavement that needs to be, be put down yet, which is not covered by Parisi's contract. So, long story long, we listed this on the agenda. There was a lot of activity in between when it was listed and tonight. We also, in consulting with Mr. Manning of our, of our Public Works Department, we wouldn't want asphalt or anything installed at this point anyway. So I guess if we're thinking about the project in parts, the wet well, the sluice gate, hatch covers, that's all paid for and being installed. The outstanding item, at least tonight, is the pavement completion.
So then, I guess my question would be the Phase 1A, I think is what we're calling it, that can't be completed till next year because of the pavement won't be able to go in until it kind of dries out and warms up. Is that where we're at?
I'm not sure how to answer that one, Mr. Manning.
Mr. Manning?
Take a shot at that. There are areas of the project that have, we've identified as starting to fail. So we'd rather let it go through another winter cycle before we have it fixed.
Okay.
So it's, it's been paved, but the pavement isn't holding up like anticipated.
Okay. And then I guess then, if, if this rolls around and it's June or whatever, and it seems like FDG isn't doing anything or not meeting their agreements, can we pull the letter of credit then? Mr. Klimar.
So yeah, I would say we wouldn't let it get that far. I agree with Mr. Manning. My understanding is Jamie identified the two remaining projects for Phase 1B that are not weather-dependent, and so we've been told they will get done, and I think those are the ones that are potentially holding up other projects. The, the other work that's being discussed is public improvements that have already been installed and are subject to, in our development agreements, a guarantee period. So essentially, what will happen in the spring is more inspections will be done. We will identify work that needs to be done as part of the, the development agreement. But you're correct, mayor, if, if, if those improvements are not made, then we would be able to draw on the letter of credit and make those improvements. I just think that we'll know before June or July whether or not that work needs to be done, and then we'd be able to take action at that point in time. I would say, I mean, we do have an obligation under the agreements to provide notice that the, the improvements need to be fixed, and then there's a period of time within which the developer, any developer, would need to act. And then if they didn't act within that time period, that's when we would be back to potentially draw on the letter of credit.
Thank you. I guess I'll make a general comment for myself. I'm extremely frustrated at how long this project is taking. I don't think anyone's happy with how things have gone. As noted in public comment, like, people, there's a high demand for single-family homes. I like this project. I supported it way back when I was in Alder, which is starting to become a long time in the past, and it's still not built yet. And I'm super frustrated because the city could use the single-family homes. I think people would, would buy them instantly. I know people have already bought lots, and they are kind of stuck in limbo and can't, and can't build the houses. So I'm extremely frustrated, and you know. So I'm extremely frustrated, and you know, obviously, we will proceed as, as legally advised on the letter of credits. However, my preference is basically if, if FDG is behind one day on a lot, on anything, on any of these deadlines, we pull the letter of credit instantly, or based on, on when we can do it legally. And that's, that's just how it is. Because again, I can't help but notice this stuff had been sitting here for weeks and months, and as soon as we said, oh, we're going to pull the letter of credit, they basically immediately started moving on it. That is not the way development should work in the city. That is not the way developers should act. However, if that is the way they're going to act, then we have to respond appropriately, which basically means we're just going to wield the letter of credit like a stick until the project's done, which is hopefully going to be sometime in the near future, and people can move in there and live in our city. And I think, I think, as bumpy as the road has been, I think it will be great once it's actually finished. But I think, I think we're just going to have to stay on it. But those are, those are my thoughts. But I don't think there's any, necessarily any action to take, but if people have different or the similar thoughts or whatever, I would like to hear them. Alder Swanson.
Yeah, so similar thoughts, you know, I, I, we, we welcome development here in Verona because we need to build places for people to live, but developers need to play by the rules. So I'm, I'm of a similar mind in terms of making sure that they do play by the rules. I am curious, so, so when, when will we next expect some sort of update on any more motion on this project? I, I don't know who I'm addressing this question to, anyone who can answer it.
I think that's probably dependent on the weather in the spring. In other words, you, you, you want to wait for a certain period of time before you perform the inspections, and then, you know, clearly, we're going to find some stuff because we've already found some stuff. Notice will be provided about the improvements that need to be made. And I think the mayor has provided just clear direction right now, where if it's not happening immediately, you can anticipate that you will see it on, in the agenda, and, and then we would move as swiftly as we can at that point. Thank you.
Other thoughts from the council? Alder Tucker Long?
I'm not going to rehash because I agree with what's been said, but I am wondering if at this point, we could activate some sort of like fail-safe motion, or whatever you want to call it, whereas we vote now that if a deadline is missed going forward, that we call on it, so we don't have to wait for it to come back to another meeting?
Mr. Klymer, can we do that?
Well, I would say this. I mean, the, the agreements that exist right now already allow the drawing on the letter of credit. And so if you want to, you could make a, a motion, and I can certainly try to come up with something that effectively says, you know, at, at a staff level, if, if the developer has not acted quickly enough to make repairs, and the appropriate notice has been provided on the development agreement, the staff is authorized to pursue drawing on the letter of credit. And I guess that would be the motion then.
Okay.
If, if, if that's what you're inclined to do. In other words, because you, you've effectively already approved the process by approving the development agreement, it would be normal, I think, for municipal staff to come to the body before we draw on the letter of credit. You know, just as, as a matter of course, to make sure that you're updated. This one is a little bit unique in like of the number of times that we have been before you on this. So, you know, action of that nature is, 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 I think you can do because it's entirely consistent with the agreement that you've already approved.
Alder Tucker Long?
In that case, I'm really tired of talking about this. And I would like to move that we vote on something today where we say that if they miss a deadline agreement, that staff is authorized to draw on the letter of credit?
Sure. I think it would be, you know, a motion to authorize city staff to draw on the letter of credit in the Whispering Coves agreement, to the extent that work is not timely completed and notice has been provided to developer without having to come back to the council for authorization to draw on the letter of credit.
Okay. So...
I think you can just say, as I just stated, if you want to.
Yes. As Attorney Klymer just stated, the motion I would like to make is to allow staff to draw on the letter of credit if deadlines are missed when adequate notice has been given.
Motion by Alder Tucker Long, is there a second?
Second.
That's a lot of people. I'm going to say Alder Swanson. Motion before the body. Questions or comments on the motion? Alder Humke.
I'm not going to rehash what was said, but this is my district, and we definitely need new, more houses, more single-family houses. And I'm also incredibly tired of talking about this, so I'm happy to be supporting it.
Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as described by Attorney Klymer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And that motion passes. All right, we will, having dispensed with Twelve-C, we'll proceed back to the agenda in the order it was listed. So we are at Item Eleven, which is old business. First up is Eleven-A, which is a discussion on possible action regarding the City of Verona versus the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and the Madison Metropolitan Sewer District and related litigation options. Mr. Olick, can we get a discussion started in open session?
Sure. Tonight, we have with us Attorney Krista Westerberg. She's been working on this with us. And in our discussions, I think we talked about an update in open session on where things stand. So if you'd like to invite her up, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if the attorney would be so kind as to address the body.
Krista Westerberg here. So, the city filed suit last year against the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources for its failure to, or for its decision to allow the Madison Metropolitan Sewer, Sewerage District to update the area-wide water quality management plan, which effectively just allows the discontinuance of discharge to Badger Mill Creek, which has raised a lot of ecological and other concerns as far as the city goes. And we, we did file that action. As you know, the circuit court ruled against the city, and the city has subsequently filed an appeal of that. In the meantime, there's been some back and forth between, first of all, the MMSD folks and the DNR about implementing conditions that were in the approval of the Amendment to the Area-Wide Water Quality Management Plan. MMSD had conducted some modeling and used that modeling to say to the DNR, we satisfied the conditions in the approval, we should be allowed to just go forward with this, or deemed to have complied with the approval. The DNR wrote back and said, well, we looked at your modeling, we think there's some, more or less said, we think there are some flaws with it. What we suggest you do are implement these mitigation projects. And the MMSD attorneys wrote back to the DNR and said, we think we complied with your conditions, please let us confirm that we have again. And if we do these mitigation projects, it's, it's because it's voluntary, and we already agreed to do mitigation with the stakeholder group that's been operating since 2023. So that's where that process sits. In the meantime, the city's appeal has been percolating in the Court of Appeals, but due to agreement among the parties to attempt to resolve the matter, we moved the briefing deadlines back till December to give time to, to let discussions play out, to see if there's something that can be, some resolution that could be reached short of having to litigate this all the way through to the end and spend further taxpayer resources, both, you know, on the part of the city and MMSD and DNR, which is also a party to the case, on, on the appeal. So that's where we're sitting. We've exchanged a few proposals, and the close, there's a closed session notice to develop the city's response.
I guess I would ask a legal advice question. Is this the kind of thing we could just handle in open session, or is this the thing we'd be better off being in closed session for our negotiating position?
I would recommend being in closed session for the negotiating position, but to, to develop the, the counter offer. But everything up till now is all sort of a matter of public record. You know, the fact that we asked for a briefing extension from the Court of Appeals, all the parties joined in that request, and that was to allow resolution.
Got it. Questions or comments for open session? Seeing no comments or questions for open session, I guess if people would like to go into closed session, I would be open to someone making that motion. Alder Tucker Long?
I move that we go into closed session to discuss the City of Verona versus Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and Madison Metropolitan Sewerage District and related litigation options. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute Section Nineteen Point Eight-Five Sub-One Sub-G conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is involved. City of Verona v. Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources at all Court of Appeals Number Twenty-Five-Dash-Ap-Dash-One-Seven-Two-Five in Wisconsin Statute Nineteen Point Eight-Five Sub-One Sub-E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding potential resolution of City of Verona v. Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources at all, the common council may reconvene in open session and take action on the closed session item.
Motion by Alder Tucker Long, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Weiss. The vote to go, the vote to go into closed session is of course a roll call vote. If Mr. Olick would be so kind as to read the roll.
Humke.
Aye.
Weiss.
Aye.
Lidle.
Aye, but if I may state that while I do serve on the Madison Metropolitan Sewerage District Commission, I do not participate in votes and have not participated in closed session, so I'm allowed to contribute for my role as an elected official in the City of Verona.
Tucker Long?
Aye.
Keller?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Oakes?
Aye.
Harrison?
Aye.
Eight Zero, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we will convene in closed session in the large conference room, and we will reconvene back here once we are done discussing that in closed session. we will reconvene back here once we are done discussing that in closed session.
Okay, it is eight forty-six PM and we are back in open session. Questions, comments, motions on this item? Alder Swanson?
I move to reject the offer.
Motion to reject the offer by Alder Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
Second of all their ways. Questions or comments on the motion? I see no further discussion. All those in favor of rejecting the counter offer from MMSD signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And the counter offer is rejected. Since we've been going for a while, I'm going to suggest eight and a half minute recess and we will reconvene at eight fifty-six PM. Thank you. Okay, it is eight fifty-six PM and we are back in session. We will move on to item twelve, which is new business. First up is twelve A, a discussion on possible action regarding twenty-one fifty-nine Range Trail, request for proposals. We will start with presentations. First up, we have one A, which is the fiduciary real estate development.
Mr. Mayor, members of the common council, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Tony DeRosa with Fiduciary Real Estate Development. We have a presentation to share with you and I think this should be on your screen at this point.
It is not.
We can see it on our screen?
Oh, now it is.
Now you can see, okay, great, thank you. So the reserve at Range Trail is designed to provide Verona with the high-quality, diverse housing options it needs while reinforcing the city's commitment to sustainability and community connectivity. We're the same team that brought you the Apex at Verona development, so we're very excited to be back before you tonight. The reserve at Range Trail represents a proven partnership with the city. Our Apex project was completed on time, on budget, and praised by the city for its thoughtful design and strong market performance. The reserve at Range Trail will carry that success forward, establishing a new benchmark for multifamily housing in Dane County. This three hundred and twenty-nine unit community will feature a mix of apartments, townhomes, and stacked flats, brought together through timeless farmhouse-inspired architecture and a first-class amenity package. In short, this is more than a development project, it's a community-defining investment in Verona's future, built by a partner the city already trusts. We've assembled the first-class team for this project with JLA as our architect and Denofri O'Katki as our lead civil engineer for the project, both of which are here tonight. Should there be any questions directly for them? For over forty years, we've been a leader in the multifamily marketplace. We are actively developing and own properties in three different states and own over thirty-five multifamily and mixed-use communities. Fiduciary is an experienced developer and investor in commercial real estate focusing on multifamily and mixed-use projects. We've grown our business into one of Wisconsin's largest real estate companies. Today, we own and manage more than nine thousand market-rate apartments. We've been recognized- We've been recognized as being the best at what we do. 20 times, we've been the winner of Property of the Year through the state of Wisconsin. Eight times, the winner of the New Construction Development of the Year. And six times, our regional managers have been recognized as being the best at what they do. Here's a high-level overview of how we've grown our company over the past 40 years into the market leader that we are today. We started with three employees back in 1985 and today, we employ just shy of 300 people. As a fully vertically-integrated company, we do it all. In terms of development experience, our team oversees every stage of the development process from land acquisition and design to construction and delivery. We have in-house construction capabilities. We act as a general contractor that allows direct oversight and seamless coordination for the project. We don't use third-party property management. We manage every multifamily property that we own. In terms of our established precedence or presence in the greater Madison area, we are actually considered to be one of the largest multifamily taxpayers in all of Dane County. We've been owning and operating multifamily communities in the regions dating back to 1992. Today, we still own roughly 3,000 apartments throughout the region. Our average hold period of those properties is in excess of 15 years, as you can see on the chart before you, reflecting our long-term commitment to the region and to what we do. We've actually only had one sale of everything we've done in this market since dating back to 1992. We have a proven track record of success across multiple local developments and communities. Our focus on multifamily housing allows us to bring a deep expertise to every project. We do what we do and we do it well. We don't also build industrial or hotels or office buildings. We stick to what we know. The ability to secure financing and raise equity has proven to be very challenging in recent years in the economy that we're in right now. That's caused a lot of projects to stall. We have incredibly strong banking relationships and equity relationships that have allowed us to continue to do what we do. As you can see on this chart, over just the past four years alone during these tough times, we haven't had to slow down at all. We've built just over 3,000 apartments. We've done total projects in excess of $900 million and raised almost $350 million in equity from our investor groups. Certainty of execution is what we are known for. We have a proven track record of delivering projects on time and as promised. Our strong financial foundation with deep capital resources allows us to move quickly and decisively. Our track record is strong, especially in Verona with our Apex development, which recently completed its first phase of 292 total units. The total project upon completion will be 401. Reliable execution is what we bring to this equation. Our ability to execute is proven. We don't tie up property delays charts, struggle raising capital. We do what we say and we do it. The Apex project is a case study. You've seen it firsthand and this is the exact same phasing that we're proposing for the Range Trail property. So the chart or the line graph in front of you, I just wanted to highlight how we worked through the Apex project when we were before you, three and a half to four years ago roughly. So in September of 2023, we received our final development agreement. That agreement was signed. We then proceeded to closing on the property. We then broke ground and started construction the very next day. Our first building in that development was completed roughly 12 months later. We finished that project this past fall in September. We are, as of middle of October, we are 91% leased. We're leasing ahead of expectations with that project. And in the next two weeks, we are preparing to put a shovel in the ground to start the second phase to complete that project. While our core expertise is in high-quality multifamily development, we have successfully incorporated small-scale commercial components into several of our communities where market conditions have supported it. In those instances, we've delivered thoughtfully-integrated spaces that add convenience and activity where appropriate. Our expertise, our experience has shown that commercial space performs best when visibility, access, traffic counts, and surrounding activity levels are strong and that forcing it in low-traffic or grade-challenged sites often results in long-term vacancy and underutilization. We've discussed this opportunity and the commercial aspect and the commercial potential with several other commercial and retail brokers that we work with throughout the region. And our conclusion and what we've been guided with is this site clearly favors multifamily. This is a non-retail quarter. There are poor retail fundamentals that exist here. Unanchored retail struggles in today's market without strong co-tendency or destination anchors. Downtown Verona, which is just five minutes away and the adjacent Costco corridor, three minutes away to the east, already serve as those established retail nodes. Retailers follow a herd mentality and they want to be where the other retailers are. Commercial development would also not provide an appropriate transition to the adjacent single-family neighborhood. Lights, noise, trash are a few things that come to mind when you try to, when you try to mix the two uses in close proximity to a single-family. Poor visibility and traffic, this site sits in a low-lying area below the grade of the main roads, which in turn limits visibility from 151, Range Trail, and M. There's no direct on-or-off ramp to Highway 51, 151, that reduces accessibility. There's next-to-no foot traffic in the area and these low-traffic counts on Range Trail and M, traditional retailers can't generate enough sales to cover the rent in these types of locations. And these are critical killers for retail success. In terms of market realities today, the high cost of new construction would push rental rates beyond what many local, small businesses can afford. National retailers are increasingly selective in where they want to locate their businesses today and would rule out a location with limited visibility and low-traffic like this location. It is the national group of retailers that are actually the most active in our economy today. Specifically, those are gas stations, car washes, and QSR or quick-service restaurants, users with drive-throughs typically, none of which I think would work here or probably even be desired for this location. All that being said, if it is this council's desire to see commercial here, we're open to exploring that if you would like us to. I think it makes sense to manage expectations as it relates to that and for everyone to understand the merits of this site for commercial uses. It could be a modification to our plan that sets aside a small, for a half-acre or one-acre for potential commercial use before we go out and formally test the market. We are open to that discussion, but I wanted you to, you to understand what our opinion on it is. When we first saw this RFP, I'll be honest, our initial thought, like anyone's, was let's cram as many buildings onto this thing as possible and make the numbers look as good as possible and throw out a big purchase price. And sure, we, we could have done that, knowing we'd just scale it back later once we got into the approval process and shared our plan with the neighborhood. But that's not really how we work. We knew that wasn't the right approach for this site or for the city. Instead, we designed something that we thought was realistic, fit into the neighborhood, and can actually be approved and built. That's why we went with a mix of two- and three-story buildings instead of all four-story buildings. I believe the other proposal shows just shy of 600 total units and mostly four-story buildings. And I think everyone here probably understands that type of scale probably isn't going to be ideally supported by the neighborhood. What we're proposing follows the same thoughtful step-down concept we used at the Apex at Verona development. Three stories, transitioning down to two-story buildings as you move closer to the single-family homes. That approach was completely embraced by this same council and this site is even more sensitive, given that it's adjacent to an existing established neighborhood right next door. We feel confident that our plan is right-sized and ready to move forward. And if the city ultimately wants to see more density or taller buildings, we can absolutely do that. We're developers, we love density, right? We just believe what we've put forward is the best balance. It respects the neighborhood, it's financially sound, and most importantly, it's something that can actually get built today. In terms of our project vision, our first goal was to respect the environmental corridor. You can see that on your site plan ahead, in front of you. That was our design criteria, work around that first and foremost. That corridor will serve as a natural amenity with walkways, benches, boardwalks for our residents and neighbors to enjoy. We have a mix of building scales and style that provide a range, a diverse range of housing types. It expands rental housing choices in an early, in an area that's currently underserved by townhomes and stacked flats. We have a pedestrian-friendly design with direct connections to the Ice Age Trail, the Moraine Kettles Preserve, as well as the Cathedral Point Neighborhood. We have given a lot of thought to this plan. We even know that there's a large heritage oak tree on the solid property line that we think has the merit of being preserved and I think the neighbors would appreciate that too. In terms of design, our three-story corridor buildings has an exterior that combines brick masonry with vertical board and batten siding on the upper floors, accented by dark panels for contrast and definition. We have varied roof lines with dark shingles, multiple gables, and recessed balconies and patios. Our exterior also includes large windows with dark trim strategically placed to enhance the interiors with abundant natural light. Our two-story buildings, which we consider calling our townhomes and stacked flats, provide a thoughtful transition as we step down from north to south as you get closer to the neighborhood. These are home-like scale and design-detailed buildings. They provide a seamless fit and provides a diversity of rental options different than traditional three-story multifamily corridor buildings. In terms of lifestyle amenities, we have it all here. We have a state-of-the-art clubhouse that serves truly as the centerpiece of our community. We have modern farmhouse-inspired architecture with our clubhouse. We'll have a community gathering room, a full kitchen, a fitness center, a resort-style pool, community grills, as well as a playground for our residents. Our outdoor amenity features include a dog run, a car care center, people to vacuum and wash down their cars, bicycle storage, and then nature trails complete with benches and boardwalks. We've even gone to the point of picking our interior finishes for the project. I think it's important for the council to see what our vision is, not just on the outside, but what the inside vision is for us. You can see we have high-quality materials. Our kitchens will include quartz countertops, shaker-style cabinetry, and stainless steel appliances. Our bedrooms will include walk-in closets and a plush upgraded carpet for our residents to enjoy. In terms of sustainability, sustainability is a big part of what we do as a matter of standard practice with our company and with our projects. The list is too long. I've been given 10 minutes, so I'm not going to be able to touch on all of them, so I'll just touch on a few. EV charging, obviously, the city has a requirement. We have no issue with that. We think that's great. In terms of outdoor lighting and dark-skY compliance, our exterior lighting is designed to minimize light pollution and our fixtures comply with the dark-sky cutoff lens requirements. Energy star-rated appliances are standard in all of our projects. We have LED lighting throughout both our interior and our exterior spaces and we also use low-flow plumbing fixtures. In terms of sustainable site design, we use native landscaping to minimize irrigation demand. Over half of our site, or 55% of it, is dedicated to green space, exceeding the code requirement. We also use low VOC paints and a big design emphasis with our site plan on walkability. While not required, we are open to and we think it's a good idea to have community engagement with this project. We usually think and usually see at the end of the day that when you get neighbors involved, you usually end up with a better, more thoughtful design and you get input of people that live next door. We are open to sharing early design concepts, soliciting input on our design, amenities, landscaping, and sensitive areas. And we have no issue with providing regular updates and construction schedules as appropriate and the ability to maintain open dialogue with city staff and elected officials is something that we feel is important as well. The five items on this list are the key criteria that were noted in the city's RFP by which a developer would be selected. We checked the box on all of these. We've designed a project number one that's compatible for the neighborhood. We have a first-class team that you've seen firsthand with a track record of execution. You've seen firsthand what we do and how we do it and how we approach our business day-to-day. In terms of financial viability, our financial track record, I think, speaks for itself. This is a project we can do. Our purchase price that we've offered on a per-unit basis of $17,500 per unit is actually 25% greater than the other competitor in this process. We think the ultimate density will eventually be determined and that that per-unit land number is really what's going to matter at the end of the day. At the end of the day, this is much about selecting the right partner as it is the right project. The scope of the project can change. You want bigger, you want smaller, we can give you that, but your partner cannot change. Thank you very much and be happy to answer any questions that you have for myself or any members of our team. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this presentation? Otherwise?
Oh, sorry. What does stacked flat refer to?
Oh, sure. So stacked flat, we have three different types of buildings. We have a three-story corridor building that has underground parking, elevators, and a common corridor.
Okay.
But that's at the north end of the development. Then we have townhomes, which are two-story buildings with direct entrances and larger units, mostly two and three bedroom units. And then a stacked flat, again, is a two-story building, all with direct entrances and attached garages. And they're just units, you know, you have a first-floor unit and then you have a stair that goes up to a unit up above that's just on the second floor. So they're just stacked on top of each other, kind of like a townhome style.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so like a marketing thing versus just a townhome? I would just call that a townhome.
Typically, the, some nomenclature there. Typically, the townhomes are a little bit larger in size and they have two-car attached garages. So that's how we kind of differentiate. Same, same concept, though.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions?
So it's, it's not fair to ask you to predict the future, but if you were moving to the next phase and negotiating a contract in terms and conditions around the purchase price that was in your proposal, like what, what should we be thinking about in terms of approvals, in terms of goals we have that might impact that purchase price? I'm assuming in the negative direction. Like what are the, what are some of the unknowns that we should be thinking about that could, in the end, impact what you all are able to offer for this parcel?
Sure, that's a good question. You know, a lot of this is driven on density. And I mean, that is probably the biggest driver of what an ultimate purchase price is going to be for somebody that looks at developing this property. As developers, it's based on the yield or how many units can be built on a property? Or more importantly, how many units does this council want to see here? What is that right unit count? And that's really the, the key driver at the end of the day of the, the density correlation to, to the purchase price. I think the other aspect of it is, while not required in the RFP, there was, you know, a couple of notes about would you like to see commercial here? Commercial doesn't yield a high value from a land perspective because this is not a strong retailer or commercial site. The traffic counts are low, the retailers that would go here pay low rent. In turn, the land that's dedicated to that type of use, not, not a great, not, not a, we look at highest and best use, right? What is the highest and best use for this property? And that's why we put forward the plan. If this council says, you know what, it's important to us that we at least explore it or we, we do a small set aside, sure, we can do that and you can handle that a couple of different ways, knowing that, you know, there's implications of, okay, what, what if you, we don't want to build spec retail. The last thing we want to do is have retail space that's built that sits vacant, right? That's not good for us, that's not good for the community, that's not good for the city. So that, those are really the key drivers that would affect this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions from the council? Alder Tucker-Long, then Alder Spencer?
Excuse me. Looking at your property that you have currently, Apex, we heard earlier that perhaps you have a pretty high vacancy rate there and I'm wondering if you can speak to the vacancy rate at your current apartment complex? rate at your current apartment complex, and how you find your people, and what you anticipate the vacancy rate would be at this new property.
Oh, sure. All really good questions. We hear that question a lot. So a couple of things. One, we've leased up the Apex Development much faster than we expected. Usually, we would anticipate by the time you finish construction, which that project took roughly 24 months to complete, we would take another seven to nine months to lease it up. We completed construction there approximately 30 days ago, and we're at 91%. We did, we did very well. Evidence of that would be, we're moving forward to the second phase of that project. It was, again, a two-phase project. The second phase is 109 additional units, and we're preparing to start that in roughly two weeks from now. So our lenders, our investors are very happy with the performance, and we've leased at an incredibly high rate. We see a lot of demand drivers. Obviously, epic is a big demand driver in the marketplace, but they're also a demand driver for a select portion of the type of units that we build. The epic demographic doesn't gravitate towards townhomes and stacked flats. Typically, an epic employee is a younger professional, mid-20s, early 30s, they live by themselves, and they're a little bit more price-sensitive, so they gravitate towards our three-story corridor buildings. What we really like is, with these different building types, is we are able to touch on all different types of demographics, from young to 40 to 50, 60, even, we have people in their 80s that live in our buildings, but the older demographic usually gravitate towards our townhomes and our stacked flats. One, they can afford it, they have a little bit more price elasticity with what they can, what they can afford month to month, but they like more space. Many of them are coming out of single-family homes. Most of them are choosing to downsize, and they want to either move into Verona, or they want to stay within Verona because they love the community and everything about it, the same reasons we love, we love your community. And so having that diverse product offering is really great, and that's why we've taken that model from Apex and brought it here because of the trends that we're seeing are real, rather than if we went with all three-story buildings, I think we're really cutting out a big part of the market. Or if we went the other way, then I think we're also cutting out a big part of the market. So we like to say our buildings attract people from age 22 to 82 and everything in between, and it's true. We've seen everything in between those two. Your other question about market. So we, we regularly conduct both internal and external third-party market studies, sometimes for our own benefit, sometimes as part of gearing up to start another, another project or another phase. So we actually just had our full-blown third-party market study completed in the last five days, so the data is real. It takes about 90 days for our third-party consultant to collect all that data because they're calling on every apartment within 10-mile radius up here. They're talking to landlords, they're talking to developers, what's in the pipeline, what's been built, what do you think will get built, what won't get built? And the stuff that has been built, how's it doing? Are, are people moving in? What are the trends? Are rents going up? Are rents going down? And it actually came back even stronger than we expected. Verona's got one of the strongest housing markets in the state, hands down, if not maybe one of the strongest ones in, in the Midwest. And basically, they came back and they said, you know what, the vacancy rate within this area of Verona is about 3.9%. So earlier tonight in public comment, you heard somebody say, referred to, I think, a balanced market when it's 94, between 90 and 94. We typically think of a balanced market when you're about 94%. Anything less than 94, I think there's some softness in the market, and you're waiting for maybe demand or supply to work its way through the system. Anything 94% or stronger, approaching the 100% mark, indicates pent-up demand in the market, a strong market, a tight market. So when you look at this market being basically the equivalent of 96.1% occupied or leased, it's a strong indicator. So we feel very confident in the data, and this is all third-party generated, so it's kind of a check on our own research, but we think there's, there's a lot of positive attributes about the community that are driving, you know, apartments to be successful right now.
Is that data you'd be able to share with us?
Confidentially?
We can't take anything confidential because it'd be a, it'd be a public record.
If there's portions of it, there's a lot of data with it, but yes, I would be open to sharing portions of that report with you.
Okay. And then, as far as sustainability goes within your buildings, are there any sort of sustainability options you'd be looking at here, like green roofs, or solar panels, or heat pumps, or, you know, I know you mentioned EV charger, but any, any of those other kinds of things, a possibility with your development?
With green roofs, first of all, we have, we don't have flat roofs here, so green roofs don't really lend itself to being successful here. Typically, we have not done heat pumps, and the other item you said was solar panels. We have not done it before. We haven't looked at it very closely. I know there's some challenges with it in roof structure, roof design. We currently don't have any planned, but, you know, we're open, open to looking at them, if that's important to you.
I mean, I can't speak for everyone, but it is important to me. And being right up by the highway, you have pretty unobstructed, sorry, losing my voice, unobstructed, you know, sun coming in, so it might be a really good candidate for solar.
For sure.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Alder Swanson.
Thank you. So something I want to ask is, because this development would be going right next to an established neighborhood of larger, single, single-family, I, you, you've already included in the plans, you know, you're, you're putting the, the two-story townhome units closer to those single-family residences. How much of an obstacle would it be if you got feedback in those community meetings that the community would prefer even more sort of separation? You know, maybe talking about increasing, like, bulwarks or hills in between your development zone and the established neighborhood, increasing tree, tree cover and screening? You know, what, what would that do to your ability to create the vision that you have right now?
Sure, that's a great question. So a couple of things on that. One, in terms of what the proposed zoning that we're looking for, for this, for this project would be, we would actually, in our current plan, exceed what the required zoning setbacks are. So that's number one. Number two, what, what things can we do? We can look at site plan modifications. We, we want to preserve a lot of that tree line. Do we look at birmingham? There is some, you know, kind of quasi-berm that exists there today when you, when you go out and take a look at it. There is some topography change, so I think some of that already naturally exists. But no, we'd be open to looking at what is the right fit, and the, the simpler part of this equation is, those are smaller buildings. You know, those are, call it 10-unit buildings. So if there's some modifications that work at a certain, you know, pinch point, and a 10-unit building gets modified or removed from the plan, it doesn't blow up the whole project.
Thank you. The other thing I do want to note is, so you, you mentioned that you are already exceeding some aspects of the zoning. That's great. I would also note that, you know, the, the thing that you have included where you'll, you'll reach out to the community, I know that that's not required, but I encourage that you be very clear in your communications with the nearby community about what the project is and sort of what your initial structure for it, for it looks like, because I know that neighbors will be more responsive if they have a better idea of what it is you're talking about.
Yeah, we prefer to be very open and say, this is the plan, and, and let them provide feedback accordingly.
Alder Tucker Long.
Just piggybacking off of what Alder Swanson said, I appreciate you saying that you want to be very open and upfront with people, but the letter you sent for the Backus Property was not very clear. And so I, I would really encourage you to try to reevaluate and, and be a lot more upfront about, here is the design we're looking at doing, here's our site plan, that kind of stuff, instead of, you know, just a very short letter that just says, we'd like to talk to you about possible developments, you know? Neighborhoods don't necessarily understand that kind of wording, so use, you know, lay terms instead of industry terms and things like that, so the neighbors can really understand what's going on.
And I can appreciate your comment, now that I think I understand the comment a little bit better, and I will address that. Within our company, we have two different development groups. Apex was my team's project, Range Trail is also my team's project. I'm not involved in the other one, but I think maybe there's an opportunity for me to bring some of this feedback and context to that discussion that I think could be beneficial. So I appreciate your comment and noted.
Alder Tucker Long.
Also, I'd, it'd be nice to see some more, like, playground structures or, like, kid-focused activities as well. I know, you know, when you're talking about such a mix of ages and being so close to the highway, it'd be nice to have a safer place to play within your development, so.
And actually, we do have a playground on the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we built one at Apex, and we had really great feedback, and that's also an amenity that is, is on the plan here as well, so.
Okay.
I agree with you.
I apologize for missing it.
That's okay.
Last, well, last chance for questions for now. Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much.
We will proceed to 1B, which is a presentation from the Cascade Development.
If you want to, yeah.
All right, thanks for having me here today. My name is Luke Stoffaker. I am the CEO and Principal of Cascade Development. I'll start off by saying that JB Olick did not hit me with his letter of credit that I have with Avalon Ridge, so the stick was not wielded for this nose. My wife was worried about my health, and after way too many hockey pucks and sticks over a long career, I got it fixed, and it just so happened that the, the timing that did not work out great for this proposal. So with this presentation, I do not expect for this to be the smoothest one I've ever done. As I tried to prepare for it this afternoon, it was challenging to read and even understand my own notes that I've written, so if you'll bear with me. I'm hoping that throughout the next 50 to 20 minutes, as I talk through this and I take your questions, you guys can begin to see the passion I have for development as a whole, but this site in particular, and the time that I've put into, and my team, understanding, I think, what are the greatest and best uses for this site that you guys own, and I think I have a really good plan to move forward with a project that you guys would be proud of. And again, in an unconventional fashion for myself, due to my limited abilities, I am going to read the first part of my proposal and then dig in. Cascade Development in partnership with Eric Johnson, Executive Chairman of High Site Enterprises, and our accomplished team submits this letter to develop 20-acre site at 2159 Range Trail with a purchase price of $8,092,000. In the weeds of this, the, the way I offered, did the offer, the letter of intent, as has been stated, obviously, density derives the financial viability of these projects. One of the challenges with this RFP is, we were given the RFP packet with limited information and knowledge of what you guys were looking for. My goal in this process was to do my best job of figuring out what you guys wanted without you telling me, and, and what kept coming up as a stated goal of the RFP was density and housing at a high purchase price. So the way I structured this, I structured it with a floor of a base price, a minimum price of $6 million, and that floor could go to, up to a level of, of $8 million plus. And, and as you'll, as we talk through this, the word for me on this whole process has been collaboration. I, I want to collaborate with the city, I want to collaborate with the neighborhood. Obviously, I am a neighbor with the Homestead project that I completed a couple of years ago. I've been here before, five, four or five years ago with, with the Bible Church, and I've been in the meetings with it when it was full, and people are angry, and I wanted to approach this as coming in, say it, with the neighborhood, with the city, unique situation where you guys owned the land, but you're also going to be voting on a large project, which you don't usually see. So one of my goals through this process was to get my foot, first foot forward. I would like to win the project. I think I could do a good job, but at the same time, you guys are going to be voting on a project that's going next to, go to a neighborhood. So working through those challenges was the big part of this, this development. Our vision for Range Trail embodies Verona's cherished tagline, hometown USA, by extending the welcoming, community-oriented spirit established at the Nabreed Homestead Development, another Cascade project opened in 2023. At the next phase of Verona's thoughtful growth, Range Trail will create a harmonious blend of residential, retail, and recreational spaces, branded as residences at Range Trail for housing and shops at Range Trail for retail. This project divises a modern rural haven that fosters connections to neighbors, nature, and Verona's broader community, while providing diverse housing options, sustainable features, and unique amenities that enhance the quality of life. At its core, Range Trail draws inspiration for the American heartlands in range charm, evoking the back 40 of a family farm, with outbuildings scattered across open ranges. This narrative builds on Homestead's barn-and-silo aesthetic, evolving it into a contemporary timeless design, which integrates seamlessly with the surrounding Cathedral Point neighborhood, the adjacent Ice Age National Trail, and Verona's commitment to sustainability. By prioritizing high-quality materials, pedestrian-friendly pathways, and eco-conscious elements, such as native peri-platties, a functioning greenhouse as a central design feature, with adjacent butterfly house, community gardens, extensive tree groves, dedicated milkweed plantings to support the mayor's monarch pledge, and promote monarch butterfly habitats, dark sky compliant lighting to minimize light pollution, adherence to the Wisconsin Green Built Gold Standard for Sustainable Building Practices, and partnership with Focus on Energy's Energy Design Assistance Program. Range Trail will meet the city's goals for diverse urban development while promoting environmental stewardship in line with Verona's Sustainability Resolution. In our last project, collaborating with Focus on Energy, we achieved a 70, 17% reduction in electric consumption, a 34% reduction in gas consumption, and a 27% reduction in energy use intensity, demonstrating our proven ability to deliver energy-efficient developments. The development's benefits extend far beyond the site. It will bolster the city's tree canopy goals through dedicated plantings and canopy walkways, creating public gathering spaces like passive stormwater parks and meandering trail systems with e-bike rentals, and introduce innovative community engagement opportunities. These elements will contribute to the neighborhood's vitality by enhancing connectivity to local parks and trails, supporting economic growth through community-focused retail for the broader Verona community. Range Trail will provide flexible housing diversity, including market-rate apartments, two-story flats, and townhomes, addressing varying needs with generate jobs, increasing tax bases, solidifying Verona's sustainable, inclusive hometown USA for generations. Sorry for that cad frozen, but that was the best way to work my way through that. The, back to the, my approach here, there were project goals, and our goal was to check as many of those boxes as possible, and we feel we properly achieved those. The financial viability has been proven with Cascade's last 10 years of development. Over the last 10 years, we have completed over 1,500 units of multifamily and hospitality, mainly in the, in the multifamily sector, and we have another 1,500 units currently under development. And we have successfully put 200-plus billion dollars in debt in, for those projects. Previous projects or current projects, DeForest Yards is a mixed-use development in DeForest that we are currently working on. Phase one has been completed, which consists of 312 housing units, an indoor hockey rink, a refrigerated outdoor arena that turns into a concert venue in the summer, a Mexican restaurant, Youngblood Brewery, and a 9,000-square-foot amenity space. Homestead is across the street from Range Trail, 100-unit development that completed in 2023. Illuminate is the first phase of a 900-unit development at the American Center on the east side of Madison. The first phase of that will open this, early this winter, or late this winter. Avalon Ridge, the aforementioned West Madison Bible Church, is a 496-unit development that has started construction or, or groundbreaking. That will come online in the next 24 months. That was a process that started, we probably had 20 different site plans in working with a lot of the former employees here, only a couple of you guys left from when we started that, but one of my favorite things of that project was, we went in with the Barney Farm, and it was very controversial. We weren't, but the Barney Farm was, and that was my first introduction to the city of Verona, and we started with the development that we thought was viable, and we ended up with one that I think everybody agreed was a And we started with the development that we thought was viable and we ended up with one that I think everybody agreed was a better development. The city council agreed it was better, planning agreed it was better. But I myself, as a developer, was excited to move forward with the project based on how we altered it and, you know, continue to develop the site. Abi Ali is a wellness resort that I'm working on at Park City that will be one of the nicest wellness resorts in North America. And one of the things I wanted to talk about today was what separates Cascade Development from other developers or other apartment complexes is a better way to put it. But we're vertically integrated, right from the ground up, development, general contracting, and management. We have been since the 60s, so 70, 80-year roots that go back. And we dedicate the larger, the largest amount of resources to our many spaces in the market. Probably our calling card is our many spaces, you can see this on the site plan. But our recent complexes have included large fitness centers, resort-style pools, multiple pools on-site, wellness centers with cold plunges and saunas, hot tub spas. We recently have been putting recording studios in our developments, golf simulators. And no one project is like the other. As I've flipped through these slides, you've seen multiple different developments that I have completed or working on. They all have different architecture. They all have a different look. They have a different feel. And one of the approaches where we, where we go and my team, KBA and Vera Becker, who's back there, we're not trying to do the same thing twice. We approach a project, what fits, what do we like, touch, feel, kind of what evolves from it? And I look at this, the thing that, that I got excited about doing this proposal was, you know, obviously, we had the Homestead with, with the farmhouse feel and architectural vibe. I like the idea of the hometown USA. I grew up in the country in Sun Prairie in a rural, in a rural setting. And I understand what people of Verona are trying to keep. I also understand that fights with development and the needs for housing in a growing community. So this was to be a nod to take a large site that's 20 acres and create housing that is viable, that helps with the housing crisis and shortage, but also say, hey, we're not just trying to do a big, modern, as big as we can, you know, development that doesn't have a touch and a feel of a national setting. So this site, I gave you guys four options, I think. I know I was only allowed to do one. I've got more if you want. But I presented with my final as the largest one with the most amount of units because that drove the highest dollar amount of the purchase price and also hit the goal of, that was stated of density. And I'll say the site plan that we presented is viable. It has a 43% lot coverage. Under code, you guys could go, you could go up to 50%, so we're well within that range. In doing that, it wasn't too hitting the code. I didn't even know what the number was until I asked today Greg Helly. I said, Greg, hey, where are we at with the lot coverage here? And he told me 43%. But the function of that was, what did I see when I went out there? I went out with Aaron Olson of Olson 2 Landscaping, who's a partner of mine, many projects and subcontractor. We walked the site and we looked at the topography and what did it feel like? What does this want to be? And saw the, the meandering kind of creek deal. How are we going to work around that? And, you know, it's low in some areas and there's a burb and where are we going to put tree groves? And where could a greenhouse situation go and community gardens? And I think, you know, the part that I got most excited about in the development of this was working through the greenhouse butterfly idea. Haven't done a greenhouse. I got on the phone with the owner of the Wisconsin Greenhouse Company, said, hey, what are you doing? Are you doing these developments? Send me some pictures. What are they, how much these things cost? You know, I got to do this. And so he's, he shared a bunch of examples of me of what he's done in multifamily out of market. Hasn't done one in Madison yet, so I was excited to potentially be able to do the first greenhouse. Because one of the things that, what we want to do, we, when we do these developments is create a situation where you're not just coming back to an apartment that you rent for 12 months and then you're ready to leave. We want you to come back and feel like you're coming back to a home or a resort and be excited to come home and have different features and functions that you could do. And so the natural trails, the ice trail, you had the greenhouses, and create an outdoor setting with this property that is, is large and it affords us the ability to do that. So that was the big focus here with the, with the meandering trails that connect to the trail. The B-cycle station that I'd like to bring in here, I don't know if anybody's done that yet. But I'd like to add that and then you could connect to the different trail system, which is, we have the map on here. But that was, that was the big focus. My, my takeaway with looking at this is, that's what I think this site affords. And as you get through the site plan process, there's an ample amount of opportunities for buffers, tree catapies. That was another one that I really wanted to focus on of adding different tree groves and tree catapies as, through the walking trails and support the sustainable efforts of, of the tree growth. I'll flip here to the site plan I submitted. And as you can see, that is mostly four-story buildings with the three-story buildings the southeast quarter. If I go to the appendix, I have other buildings with townhouses at two stories, different variations of retail. So we have a low-density, medium-density, high-density plan. A little unconventional, but I actually offered in my first meeting to partner with the single-family houser, knowing that you guys have single-family shortage. Didn't know if I was allowed to do that. But it really was just trying to show you guys, hey, let's, let's look at this, you know, collectively and say, what is this large, tractable land that is valuable from a sense that you've got an existing neighborhood that is, that is going to have, want to have input, it's in a good location? What should this end result be? And I think my takeaway for me is I'm willing to work with the city in collaboration to try to do the best efforts to create the best development within a budget that's viable. And for that, the selection criteria that you guys listed, the RFP, was the amount of money per acre and we had a 400,000-per-acre number. I had sustainable design elements, which I've detailed. Proposed the maximal use of the site, which I believe we did with the high-density site. Development with a partnership organization with successful track record of similar projects. We have, like, as I mentioned, 1,500 units over the last 10 years. We have, I believe, around 500 units currently under construction and another 1,000 in the pipeline. And with the RFP, we've detailed our financial viability and our ability to get the job done. And from that, I welcome questions because this was a little sloppy on my end, admittedly. But I'd love to kind of work through a Q and A with you guys.
I have a handful of questions for you. Okay, so the first one is, how many, you mentioned that you've been around for a really long time. How many properties have you sold that you've completed, like, since you've started?
One. I had one transaction to a developer from Seattle.
Okay. Are you, does any of these properties include, or any of these buildings would include solar panels?
We do not currently have a solar plan.
And would you, it all be, would you consider a solar plan?
I would. And the first one to tell you, I do not know a ton about it. And I've poked around enough with my friends that do affordable housing and that's where you typically see these with the tax credit side of things. I would be open to exploring it.
Okay. And then I'm curious about the retail components of this, given what their counterparts have said or the competitors have said about retail. I'm curious your take on the retail situation, given they think that's not viable. And I just, I like retail, but I also want to make sure it's, it is viable.
It is not a grade A retail site. What I looked at the approach of was you have a vibrant neighborhood and if we could create some service-oriented retail, that would be the goal. You know, a coffee shop, a sandwich shop, you know, the, those couple of service-oriented pieces. But it's, it wouldn't be the first retail site you'd look to do. But we wanted to incorporate it in there as something that if, if you guys liked it, we were willing to, to do it. I had success in DeForest with small amounts of retail in the DeForest Yards project. And I have a small amount in my Illuminate project. So I think the goal here was to not have it be an overarching empty space. But if we wanted it on that quarter where there is sub-level of traffic, could we attract those, kind of like neighborhood-oriented retail spaces would be the thought?
Okay, great, thank you. And then on your, the different, I was, I was confused on the different options you gave. Is it, how would we know, like, what you would offer based on?
My offer was based on the.
Yep, this one, but there's like other ones below it, right? Like, how would we know what, like, if we were not? I'm just curious, like, how, this, like, does it go in numerical order, basically? Like?
So the, the purchase price was based on the, the approved unit count? So in working with planning and zoning, we would end up going through a process of, I think, the 578 would, I would submit that. And then that would get feedback. And if they said, hey, we like this, we would have moved that around. If we ended up at, settled on 485 units, that would be the final number to add to the purchase price. So the, the weird answer is none of those site plans would get built. And it's just the, the way that, that whole process works with the site utilities and the whole development process. The, the goal would be to, I think, if, if we entered an agreement like this and you guys promoted the density piece of it, then we would, of course, work to get the, the higher number. That would be our goal if that was yours. If we could do that in a manageable way that, that the neighborhood was okay with and the city staff was, was working with.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all my questions for now.
Alder Laidel.
So I, I know you mentioned that some portions of the RFP were a little vague. And I don't want to offer you opportunities that the other proposer didn't have. But looking through the documents, it appeared that you, the offer was a floor of $6 million with a minimum of 325 units. Was I looking at?
Correct.
Okay. So that, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I would like, you know, a little bit of clarification. If we, as a council, decided that density of around 320, 330 was more what we were in, looking for, my calculations put your number pretty similar to the offer from the other proposer. So just confirming that with a floor of 325 units, your offer, subject to all the contingencies, is 6 million?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, my offer is 6 million with, I look at this, it would be, that would be a very, a fairly low number for a 20-acre site. So I'm absolutely comfortable at 325 units and 6 million dollars.
And then just to try to ask you the same question I asked them. And I guess you're probably going to answer similarly, but impacts that could change that offer price primarily to the negative as far as constraints that we might put on you that, you know, they've, you have both done development with the city of Verona and it seems like you're pretty aware of our standards. But what, what things beyond density, I'm assuming density is one of them, would impact that offer if and when we went into a formal purchase contract?
I think the, the really only large bogey out there is the TSA traffic study that, that needs a light. I have a fairly large number through my estimates in working with KL Engineering to have plenty of room in there. But if it came to light that you guys needed a six-lane, you know, tourney or something like that, that was $4 million, that obviously would be a problem. But I say that that would be the first order of business confirming that what KL told us in the due diligence. But I don't see anything other, the site utility piece and how it tied into sanitary and store and water, that's all been flushed out by Vera Becker and I feel confident that, that there is not. I think my first round of the offer, it happened quick with how it came out and the timeline. So I was a little more conservative with my offer. And then as I went to the second round, we had more time to get, solidify answers of what the site constraints were, which is why I was able to get a little more aggressive on the offer.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So Alder Humke, you stole my question about solar panels, but I'll still ask about heat pumps. Is that something you would consider, heat pumps?
We have it in the past because they don't function well with the magic pack units in apartments. And as far as the, the maintenance of them and, and we've looked into it. I've talked to Dave Jones. Soft plug, 90% of my contractors are Dave County, Dave Jones, Olson 2, Ace Rafita Verona, which is a big deal. But one of the unique things that we are good at is we come from a construction background. So I didn't list it because I got a little rambling a little bit, but we really know the construction side of the business. And we're over treating all these different rocks to build a better building at, at a better price with that construction knowledge. We've looked into the heat pump thing and we haven't been able to have it be viable in the past. I do want to look at water storage and specifically because I think it ties in a little bit to the, the aesthetic of the development and maybe do some storage takes on site and understand that a little bit. And potentially lead into the community center as a source of sustainability efforts, where what I've looked into is the in-mass, you know, larger buildings. It's hard to do geothermal and things like that. But in smaller areas to maybe common area spaces, work on the solar side of things, it's, I think, could potentially be more viable.
Okay. And then I was intrigued by your mention of working with a single-family home developer along with the project. And I'm curious if, you know, looking at your, like, medium or high-density plans here as far as units, if you were able to make the buildings that front onto Highway 15118, maybe five stories or taller, would you be able to move the other buildings further away from the residential and maybe put in some single-family homes along that residential line?
I, I think the best spot for the residential would be west of the stormwater. I lost my, here, but that connects with, with the neighborhood. And that was where, when I was looking at that hybrid plan, that's where we looked at that connection. I think as far as the heights, I think four stories is probably the max that you would want to go. And that goes into a building construction style of podium plus four and making it viable from that perspective. It also gets really challenging. You guys have your one-to-one parking ratio underground. Three stories, no problem. Four stories, we have to put some plaza decks in to, to hit that requirement. The second, when you go to five, it becomes really challenging. But to that point, I'm very open to a staggered development that has, you know, reduces the height. It is worth noting that Homestead across the street is three stories, probably sits a good 15 feet above the base of Rage Trail, this, this site. So a four-story building on this site is probably comparable, and I could verify that exactly, to where Homestead sits, the way that the topography works. And there is a large, that large burb that was created, I think, by the previous developer before. And so there is a ton of coverage there and there's actually a natural, there's been some trees planted. But the goal there was to plant as many plantings on that burb as possible. But very open to the building heights. That was one of the things we did at Avalon Ridge to kind of create some step backs.
And just one follow-up question. When you say that, you know, four stories would be as high as we want to go, is that as high as you are willing to go? Is that what you mean?
It becomes financially less viable, especially with the parking requirements, to go five.
Are, are you able to put underground parking under the parking lots?
Like, yeah, so that would be the plaza deck. You'll already have that at four stories. So when you went to five, you would, you would really, it would be odorous. I, I think the way you go to five is you have to go to a second level of parking, like a second level deck. And the only guys that do that are the guys for about a town. And then they try to sell the local guys their. And then they try to sell the local guys their stuff after they get approved, because you can't build it. And the other thing that it does, when you, when the larger that plaza deck becomes, the more impervious that takes up, so that we have stormwater issues. So all the natural trail and green space stuff, you start chewing into that. So that, those are the two big issues with the density pieces, is the underground parking and then stormwater. And then you get into underground storage tanks and a bunch of stuff that I think you'd probably like to avoid.
Can you explain a plaza deck to me? I don't know what that is.
Yeah, so, so the underground parking, which is below the, kind of the outline of your regular building, in a three-story building, you would go directly below that footprint of the first floor. And you could get one-to-one parking by going under that. The second you go to the fourth floor, my architects hasn't figured out yet how to get me that extra 25% of parking in that same footprint. So what happens is, maybe a lot of the buildings I've been building right now are U-shaped. So if you picture that U, maybe half of the inside of that U would also be underground parking. It would be, you could put plantings over it, you could be your driveway, any different imagination. But essentially, you're building a big hole, and your, your actual footprint above that, though, is not the full footprint. So that allows you to get that extra one-to-one space.
Gotcha, thank you.
Alder Keller?
I just, the other proposal, they spoke to how that they run their own, they manage their own properties. And so I just wanted some clarification on how you guys handle the property management.
Yes, we've been managing our own properties since 1967, in different variations. Cascade is fairly new, but since 2016. But we come from the hotel industry in the, in the seventies. And the advice I got is, don't let somebody else manage your property and do a worse job. But no, we are very hands-on on the management side. I think have created a very good reputation locally as a, one of the better managers at, in, in the market.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing no other questions, thank you. I guess we'll proceed to the next part of the discussion. Mr. Allig, will you give us a brief overview on the RFP process and what we're going to do tonight?
So basically what we're, staff are looking for direction on whether you, you liked one more or not. Anything that, that we could kind of take as information to, to keep this ball moving, knowing that we also have, I talk about, you know, juggling balls up in the air. We have the other property, you know, that we're looking for, for site selection, because Mr. Manning needs to put his salt somewhere, so we can't sell the current parcel without having at least something quasi in place. So I guess what was your impression from the presentations tonight? Is anyone leaning the direction is really what we're looking for?
Yeah, and I guess I would also point out, even if, if the entire council was 100% like, this proposal is the best one, it's not like we would sign an agreement tonight. It would still have to be, it would still have to be negotiated. So it's not like we would sign an agreement tonight and it would get built tomorrow. There's still a long way in the process. I just want to make that clear to everyone. And again, as Mr. Allig noted, we, we do have to have somewhere where we put our salt. So with that, I'd open it up to general discussion. Alder Helmke?
So I guess my thought was coming into this, it seemed like the higher dollar model was just, made, made a lot of sense. But as, listening to this conversation and the public comment earlier, which is totally unrelated to this, but just the idea of bridging the housing levels to have less density up against the single-family. If I'm foreseeing what is going to happen down the road, I think that that's very likely going to be coming to public comment if we go forward with the highest density. So I, you know, them being comparable, I guess, I really liked both the plans. I don't necessarily, they both, I liked, I liked, like the greenhouse and all that, the gardening piece of that one plan, and the kind of unique amenities that it provides. But I really liked the outdoorsy kind of feel of the other one. So I guess I'm not, because they're both sort of in a similar price range, I don't, I don't actually feel super strongly about either one. I thought they both presented really well. So I, I am tending to think that this is going to be, in my mind, a lower, like more comparable pricing based on just density is my sort of takeaway on it.
Mr. Kleiner?
Yeah, I guess I just, I wanted to piggyback off those comments, because I think they're good. And, and just from a procedural standpoint, you know, we have to be careful here how we approach this from the standpoint of we own the land and we're going to sell it, but we also have the zoning authority, and we can't intermingle the two. And my, two excellent presentations by experienced developers. My assumption is, and if I were in their shoes, you know, how, however they, this is going to be negotiated, it's, it's going to be, the offer is going to be contingent upon obtaining the approvals that they need, which is why I want to point out the, how we need to be careful here of, we, we definitely need to take into consideration the purchase price, because we own the land and you have an obligation as council members to do what you can to assist taxpayers from a financial standpoint. But we can't intermingle the zoning decision with that, because I believe that you, I also agree with what Mara said, which is, at some point in time, you're going to have a public hearing on this. And as you have in most municipalities, including Verona, you're going to have people who are going to come in and say, look, I like the fact that now you're transitioning from the Public Works Department to what ultimately is likely to be residential. But you're also probably going to see people coming in here saying, we want less density, which then kind of has, you know, knocks heads with the idea of the larger density is likely to lead, lead to more money. And so I just want you to have all of that in your mind as you're thinking about that, where we definitely can do this and go through this process, but we also have to make sure that we keep everything separate. And as, as you're evaluating the two proposals, I think both of the developers noted that they have flexibility on how to approach this. And so that's going to have to be, that, that I think is going to play a role then, and also the approval process, where you likely will have people in the room saying, hey, this is great, but let's try to keep the density down. And, and that's a lot of information to share with you in one statement. And so you may take some time to, to, you know, have, think about that in light of the presentations that you've, that have been made. And so I just wanted to be able to make that comment.
Alder Weiss and Alder Harrison?
Mr. Kleiner, I don't understand the, the provision on discussing the zoning, because they seem pretty tied together. Like, it's, it's kind of like, how do you discuss, you know, the thing without discussing the other thing?
We, we can discuss both. We can't make our decisions. In other words, in, in, we can't do contract zoning, which is effectively, hey, we'll give you this zoning if you give me this amount of money. And so that's illegal. And so in this case, you, you're going to be asked to have to deal with both. In other words, we own the property, and so we want to be able to sell it for what we believe is a reasonable price. But you can't make your sales price contingent upon doing something for us from a zoning perspective.
But.
And we, we can't, like, we, we absolutely can't do that. That's like just a non-starter.
I believe you, I just, I just don't, I just don't, you know, it's like the peanut butter and the jelly. It's the peanut butter and the jelly. It's like, you can't.
That's what's going to make this process, we're going to have to move slowly.
So would a, would a, a sale price that is, that has a per-unit dollar value, and then density to be described later, would that be a?
I think we're going to, we're going to have to kind of.
How would, how, what would be your suggestion for how to move forward, I guess, and staying on the right side of the law here?
I, I think that we need to have more discussions internally at a staff level and probably with the developers, so that we can come up with what I think is going to be a conditioned offer to purchase, so that we can walk that line. And, and right now, without having more information, it's kind of difficult to come up with exactly what we're going to do. But we're going, we're going to be able to get there. There's no doubt in my mind that we're going to be able to do that. What makes it a little bit more difficult is the fact that I, I, we're going to have to find a way to do, address the exact issue, the issue that you just identified within the offer to purchase itself, knowing that, again, I believe that they're going to want to have, you know, anybody who's going to want to buy this property from us is not just going to say, all right, here's X number of dollars, and then we'll worry about getting our approvals later. It's going to be, if, if we get the approvals that we need, then we'll purchase the property, which is what most developers do. It just, it just so happens that they're usually working with another private party, and, and we're not intermingled with that because we don't own the land. Here, because we own the land, we just have to vote very carefully and thoughtfully to make sure that we don't run afoul of that.
And, and that seems to be the added complexity of, this was initially conceived of as a land swap, in, in effect, for the, for a property that, where the, the Public Works property will go. And so if we have to have a, where is Mr. Manning going to put his salt answered prior to the sale? But then that costs money, and so is it, is it a swap or not? I guess, I guess I feel like the, the order of operations here is going to be challenging.
Well, I, I mean, I, I thought the way that you all handled the, the last meeting as it related to what, what land are we ultimately going to look to purchase for the new Public Works Department? It makes sense to go through the, the needs analysis that you're doing. My belief is, in, in all likelihood, you're probably going to have to separate the two. In other words, you're going to have to have a comfort level with the needs analysis. And, you know, in, in, in part, you may say, because I think it's still something you're contemplating, is, once we get that needs analysis, do we, do we want to have a further conversation to put the, about putting Public Works at, at this location? If you, if, if you go through that discussion, then you say, nope, it, we've done the needs analysis, it's, it's not going to work at this location. Then I think you're going to have to have two different paths. One is the sale and how this property gets developed is going to be one path. And the, the land that the city's going to purchase for the new Public Works facility is going to have to be a second path. And then it's going to be up to you of, do you feel comfortable making one decision before you've made the second? And my, I think you probably need more information before you're going to be able to, you know, decide that. And that could go any number of ways. You might say, hey, I don't want to sell Range Trail until I have this other land locked up, because at the end of the day, if I can't get that new land, maybe I got to put the Public Works Department here. Or you might say, boy, I'm not sure if I want to sell this. And I mean, again, there's going to be, there are a lot of balls in the air on this one. I do feel comfortable that you're ultimately going to get there, because, because we have to, quite frankly, that's why. But yeah, it, it's going to be complex. It will.
I have Alder Harrison, then myself.
All right. So my opinions on this, I think I am in favor of, I'm leaning towards fiduciary's proposal for a couple of reasons. But I do really like the points that Alder Helmke brought up. I like the details of the second proposal we heard tonight. I like the inclusion of a greenhouse. I think that's an excellent idea. I like the, I like the proposal for some, you know, business that is like oriented towards serving the population that lives in that, in that little block there. But I worry about putting like expensive and like luxury and unattainable housing right across the street from, I mean, Homestead looks like an excellent property, I will say. And I think this looks like it would turn out to be.
I have a question. I might be confused. Did you say fiduciary, like Cascade or?
No, I'm in favor of fiduciaries for.
Okay.
For the reason that I don't want to put additional luxury housing in the same spot, essentially, as this other luxury housing. Because I, I think the property looks great. I think that the proposal looks pretty good. But I worry that we're putting too expensive of property there that would be hard for most people to afford. So, and for that reason, I like the diversity of the plan that fiduciary put forward. I like the, the housing options that were there. I like the density. I like the, the natural, you know, elements that they want to bring into the property. I, yeah, I, I think both proposals are very good. I worry that one proposal leans more towards like luxury and expensive housing that I wouldn't want to support.
Calling on myself, I guess, I want to say two things. I know, I've heard from plenty of developers that they're not super keen on commercial. I know the, the market is not super strong there. However, I do think we're building, or, or, the, the community that we want to see built in Verona is something that will last 30 years, 50 years, and beyond. And I think when you add commercial, you make it much more resilient as, as a space. And I know it might, it'd end up being a little bit not as profitable, but I think it's better for the people who live there. I think it's better for the community. And I think, you know, again, residential seems completely unstoppable right now, and it probably is unstoppable right now for at least like the next five years. But, but beyond that, I think it just makes the place more attractive if it has the potential to be flexible. And then I guess the second thing is, I guess, this is just a general reminder to the council, like, it's, it's a really tough thing in between, between what the neighbors want, between what the city needs, between what housing demand is. And I, and I hate to be crass about it, but to me, a lot of this just comes down to money. We have a ton of expenses coming up. The budget this time was, was super, super tight. And for me, one of the, the biggest factors is, is the potential amount of money that the city can get. Because again, this is not, this is not money for me, or the Alders, or any of the city's staff. We don't get paid on commission. If we get more money, it means that we don't have to tax the, the people who live in Verona as much. And that includes renters, because yes, renters don't pay property taxes directly. However, landlords pass those, those costs along. And so I look at this and saying, if we can get a decent amount of money, we don't have to borrow as much money for the new Public Works building, which means the taxpayers don't have to pay for it as much. And so that's, that's the thing I'm really struggling with, because I do, do like the Fred proposal. I think it has a lot of positive things in it. But to me is, again, this, this sounds crass, but it, it's the money, because then it, it tends to benefit the community long-term if we're in good financial shape. So I guess, I guess I'm saying I'm leaning towards the Cascade one. Alder Tucker Long, then Alder Weiss?
Are we able to ask questions of the developers at this point?
Um, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay. I'm wondering if we could get a representative from Fred to come up and just kind of respond, because I did not get that impression at all. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. I did not get that impression at all between the differences in the type of housing that was being provided. And so I'm wondering if you can comment on like, like estimated cost of what a unit would cost in, in your buildings, and whether or not you would consider them to be luxury apartments?
Yeah, so good question. So typical, this, this is very similar to what we did at Apex in terms of hitting multiple price points. So it's, it's market rate housing. We have units of small studios with a price point as low as, you know, 1,400. And we go up to about 2,900 for a three-bedroom townhome with a two-car attached garage.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'm wondering if Cascade could answer the same question?
Yeah, our, we will have a similar market rate product. So the, I do appreciate that you think it looks more luxurious. And I, and all, joking aside, that, that is my calling card, is I wish we could take this on the road, I could show you my developments. I take a lot of pride in them. And we do, with our ability of how we're able to, to, to build, build a more luxurious product and charge the, the same market rate rent. So I expect our rates to be consistent with Apex across the board. My studios usually range, they start around 1195, 1,200-ish, and go up to that 1,400 range. My one-bedrooms are in the 1,600 to 1,750, and the two-bedrooms 2,100 to 2,300. The three bedrooms that we've had have been in the 2,700 range. So rate-wise, we're actually pretty consistent. And that would be, again, the, both products, both of us would end up with a market rate product that would have the market decide.
Thank you. And then my second comment would be that I, I really like both of the proposals we've seen. I also am super excited about the greenhouse, especially considering that's an amenity we haven't seen before from a developer. And, you know, we're pretty excited about being able to offer something unique to people. But I am wondering if we could have staff do some discussions and get some more information about adjustments to the, to both of the plans, to talk about transitionary housing, where the property's about right up against single-family homes, and possibilities for maintaining the density, but making sure that, how the properties look right up against the, the other single-family homes would be, you know, shorter buildings, broken-up buildings, condo, condos or single-family homes or something, to provide that transition to the existing housing.
I just want to make one comment, I think, and, and Mr. Kleiner, correct me if I'm wrong, but, but typically, we're looking at, at units and acreage and stuff like that. We're not looking at owner. We're not looking at ownership. So the idea is if you have something that's multifamily, that could be condos or apartments. So we don't we don't cover that, is my understanding. Is that is that correct? Because we've been told that in the past.
Yeah, I mean, I guess maybe I misunderstood. I understood the the comment to be more related to almost anticipating statements by Nate by Verona residents saying, look, I appreciate the fact that you want to put multifamily or condos here, but essentially more of a aesthetic issue of, you know, how is this going to look and how's it going to impact my properties, not necessarily on an ownership issue. So I do agree with what the mayor is saying, but I think I think you could kind of you could essentially do both things of no matter what, how you term the the ownership or renting, how is this going to impact the adjacent properties?
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I don't know if that's the direction we're going, but I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine if it's like, you know, twin homes or I'm not sure all the terms, but row houses or whatever, you know, but something, yeah, something that would be like one to two stories.
Got it. Otherwise.
I have a question for the Fred representative. So you mentioned before about the the Bacchus property being a different team or whatever within the same kind of umbrella. That doesn't so I'm concerned about that answer. And then also, you said like a lot of the things that I think that like, you know, we want to hear about like the, you know, like working with the neighbors. And I think that coming forward with a lower density plan for the purpose of that being more amenable to the to the neighborhood and fitting within the context better, I think that there's probably a lot of merit to that. But with the Bacchus property in particular, that's not happening and like the notice wasn't great and other things. And so what I feel like it's not like I'm wary of accepting or of like, just like, oh, that was a different team, I guess, you know, like whatever. It's still it's still within the organization that you're representing, correct?
That is that is correct.
And I guess I don't understand why, if that's something that is kind of acceptable, like, you know, in terms of the notice being subpar, and I've been told that the some members of the of the concerned neighbors haven't been able to get a hold of anybody to get responses on questions and things like that. And I guess I'm concerned that if that's something that occurs at, you know, with you guys, that that's going to continue in other properties. I guess I don't, you know, if you change roles, is now the is it going to, you know, the same issues that we're seeing in that property going to exist at this one? I guess, can you just like respond to that at all? I guess help me understand that.
That's a very fair comment. A couple of things. One, run by a totally different group. And I agree, that's probably not a great answer, right? I don't think I would disagree with that. I can address that in two different ways. One, I've been the lead contact for the Apex at Verona project since we were here three and a half, four years ago. And I've worked with, you know, a handful of you on the council and a lot of the city staff. And I think I could they can speak to my approach and what we've done and have we have we taken the right approach and have we done what we said we were going to do? I think the answer you'd find would be would be yes. I think, given the situation, I think we've actually just rearranged our company in the last week. We've publicly announced that we're changing to go from two different groups internally to just one internal group. And for one of the reasons is actually this, to have more consistency for this being one of the side effects of that. So actually, I'm going to be responsible for overseeing that group. So this Bacchus property actually will come under my purview effective, you know, a couple days ago. So I'll be much more involved. And I've learned more tonight about it than than I had before. So I think we'll be able to bring that that context. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's the that's the reality. Those are those are the facts. And that's not how I approach it. And I don't even know what the facts are completely of what notice was given, what notice was not given, what phone calls were made, not I can't speak, because I really, quite frankly, don't know the answers to those things. All I can tell you is that I think I can bring that back and, you know, try to straighten that situation out. I think you can have my word on that. And you can look at the track record of me personally of how I've dealt with what we've been dealing with with Apex and how we move that project forward. And, you know, we had a lot of challenges there, too, off site, working utilities. And I think we've been able to navigate a complex issue there to have a successful outcome for all people involved. And I'd hope we'd be able to, you know, come to the same solution with the Bacchus property as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Severson, did you have your hand up? Oh, thank you can you can take a seat. Thank you.
I just want to clarify some clarify some things regarding the the public notice since it got brought up multiple occasions. So the public notice that was sent by the developer was not a required public notice. The public notices that get noticed that are required is something that the city does. And those are very standard. They I mean, the language changes with the address and the applicant name, but those are very standard letters that go out. The letter that was sent out that was referenced was invitation to an open house where the developer was going to show the proposal to the neighbors and get some get some feedback. And that letter was shared with the city at a time, and was shared with the council as well. And, you know, maybe the letter could have been clearer, but I wouldn't say it's inconsistent with with any other letters that that would go out for a public hearing. So I don't I just bring that up because I don't want it to be misunderstood what the purpose of the letter was for. That's all.
Okay. I got Alder Helmke, then Alder Liedel.
I'm an apples to apples kind of person. And it would be really helpful for me to see, like, if we're looking at density, to have like, like a comparability between the two. Because I just feel like right now, we're looking at apples and oranges, and it's really meaning like higher density from Fred fiduciary. And then like, could we do it higher and lower? Because I feel like we're looking at two different kinds of densities. I'm hearing the mayor say he wants a higher density. I'm hearing other people say they might want lower density. So I don't I don't even know what to be comparing to, because I is that a fair request?
I mean, I think, I guess, just so to make sure I'm understanding it, so basically is because Cascade did their proposal structured a little bit differently, it's hard to feel like we're being fair to Fred.
It's not even it's not really about fair. It's how my mind works in terms of data collection. Like, because he gave a range of six to eight, and I'm only seeing the 5.7. So I don't know what would like the higher density look like from fiduciary?
I guess then I would ask fiduciary if if you would be willing to give us a proposal, let's say, at three levels, you know, kind of low, medium, and high.
Yeah, our proposal, I mean, the RFP did not ask for four proposals. We gave one. We gave one that we thought was realistic. We gave one that we thought we know we can execute on. I think that's a big part of what we bring to this equation is we can we can execute, no question about it. If you want us to go more dense, we can give you more density. The way we look at this is our purchase price per unit is based on $17,500 per unit. So that's how you get to our purchase price of approximately 5.7 million. You do the math of 17,500 times the unit count, and you get to the purchase price.
Then that's good. I'm good with that.
If the the direction is 400 units to get the purchase price to a higher range that the council is looking for, the math is simple.
Okay.
Change the unit count, keep the same per unit, and we can get there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Alder Liedel and Alder Keller.
Yeah, so just to state the obvious, this is in Alder Tucker Long in my district. And so our constituents are the ones that will be questioning some of the decisions we make, no matter what decision we make. You know, to offer my personal view, I'm uncomfortable with the purchase price at 329 units. I'm uncomfortable with the density at 578 units. But I do think if we proportion those out, we're going to find that the offers are pretty similar on a per unit equivalent basis, if you factor in the floor and the additions that were mentioned. So what I'm curious from a staff standpoint is we listed selection criteria or priorities for the the city in addition to just pure dollars and cents on, you know, what are some somewhat arbitrary numbers in terms of number of units, because we know they're going to change over time as we go through this process. Is there any kind of rubric we can apply for the other selection criteria in terms of development experience with the city, financial stability? So we have some other quasi quantitative ways to compare the two proposals as opposed to saying, well, one's more money, but it's more units. One's less money, but it's fewer units. We have to pick now, not really knowing where we'll finally land.
I guess I would also offer, we don't we don't have to pick tonight. So it could be in the future. But I guess, does staff want to weigh in? Mr. Olick.
Yeah, all those points are very well taken. I think we need some more time as well internally to do an evaluation like that or think about that. But we do want to keep the ball moving. I guess I'm still outside of what Alder Liedel kind, and I will go back at the video and relook at that. Is there anything else for feedback tonight from from the Alders on these proposals?
I definitely think, yeah, there's going to be more more feedback, because several Alders haven't spoken. Alder Keller.
I just wanted to invite Mr. DeRosa to check out the YouTube of our last council session where a lot of the Monte Cristo neighbors came and shared some of some additional feedback. So it could be a good way for you to hear from other neighbors that were not able to come tonight. And maybe it would help inform you as you get all of this new responsibility under your hat. And relative to Cascade, I just wanted to point out, too, that one of the things that I think that was highlighted in the discussion tonight was that Cascade is using local contractors, which has a maybe a greater chance of benefiting the surrounding community immediately. So just wanted to throw that out there, buy local.
Other feedback or thoughts or questions from the council? Alder Swanson.
I'm a little hesitant to say something that's a little bit new and possibly open a can of worms. But over in on our side of town, in Alder Keller and in my district, we had some some new developments that did incorporate some retail space that took a long time to fill. And that was one of the things that I got enormous feedback from constituents on when I was going around knocking doors, when I've continued talking to constituents, is asking about when is that stuff going to get filled? So while on the one hand, I'm a huge proponent of having retail accessibility within our communities, because I think that's how you build a community that wants to remain a community, right? How do we stop people from bowling alone? At the same time, if we can't actually put businesses in those retail spaces, it becomes problematic, not just in terms of lost revenue, but in terms of actually becoming a negative drain on the psychology of the nearby inhabitants. That doesn't really explain me one way or the other. I I find myself in the shoes of a lot of other, at least a couple of the other Alders, in that I think both these proposals look very good. But that is one thing that I'm I am pulled two ways on with the Cascade proposal.
Other thoughts from the council? Alder Harrison.
Okay, I want to get the record straight, that now that I know a little bit more about the pricing ideas, I am less like overtly in favor of Fred's proposal. However, not however, because this isn't even related. In response to Alder Swanson's comment here, I think that a counterpoint of like having the retail space makes this like actually truly walkable area. Like, this is a central location to Costco and like downtown, but it is not like a comfortable walking distance or like walking route to either of those places. So for me, I think to myself, it's sort of the, you know, long term goal that Mayor Diaz was talking about as well. But my thought is, this isn't truly going to be a walkable place if there aren't like businesses that come here, right? Eventually, we don't want this to be like purely residential, because there isn't anything like within the like real realistic walking range of these properties that like anyone could walk to. So walkability, you know, is, I don't know, nominal in the fact that maybe there are connections to, you know, the sidewalks and you can go there. But it's not really walkable if it's if there's nothing in range.
Other thoughts, feedback, or questions from the council? Okay, so then moving forward, I guess, what kind of directions does staff need? So I'd ask Mr. Olick or Mr. Severson on if there's anything you need to have clarified? Because I think some of the stuff is obvious, like we did get some clarification on the price, and we did get some a question about, you know, willingness to have step down density near the single family homes. But is there other stuff or other directions?
I guess from a staff perspective, I think we've we've provided some criteria that we thought would be helpful in kind of making a determination between the various proposals. In terms of price, that seems to be pretty pretty well known, at least on a per unit basis. I think both developers have expressed their willingness to kind of look at it from from that standpoint. And maybe we can clarify that with them, you know, before next meeting. But I think if there's any other criteria that you think would be helpful, I guess it would be interesting to know what what that would be. Otherwise, I'm other than price, I think these two developers are, you know, experienced, capable. They both have projects in in the local area in Verona that have been built successfully and occupied. I think it's going to be very difficult to find any anything between the two developers that's that's off by that much. I think it's kind of going to be a just a gut reaction for not talking about price. But I would be curious to know what other Alders and the mayor has to say.
Any questions then, I guess, from Mr. Severson or general comments? And again, like, there is more, you know, research to be made. But again, I would also open it up if people feel comfortable making a decision tonight. They could as well. And it's only, again, a negotiating point. But if not, we could wait to the next meeting as well. I guess I will ask informally, how many people feel comfortable making a decision tonight?
I'd prefer to wait.
How many people prefer to wait? Okay, okay. So in the interest of keeping it moving and working out logistics, I think, I guess, one other question I would like staff to ask both applicants is if if we need to if they need to host our salt shed for a little while, if they'd be willing to do so. Because again, we still have some stuff to work out for for Public Works. And I know if, say, this project negotiated, RFP was approved, let's say, in January, I don't think they're going to be breaking ground in January. And so hopefully, we will have a plan for our salt shed by then. But again, we might not. And so I would I would like to know the willingness of applicants if they would work with us on that.
I could actually answer that. Because we asked in our interviews of of all four developers, and we got the same answer from all four, yes, we're willing to work with you, so.
Alder Liedel.
One of the unknowns that I think was just mentioned once, but I assume affects both developers, is traffic impact. And I don't expect us to complete that on our dime on a very amorphous project at this point. But if you could kind of come back with some, you know, at a minimum, there's going to need to be Elaine added. At a maximum, there needs to be a signal that's left in, right out, whatever, just to kind of give us some concept of, you know, what an impact for somewhere between 350 and 500 additional units would be in that location, with the understanding that it is very much subject to confirmation.
Other thoughts from the council or questions that you want staff to run down? Okay, last chance, I guess, for anything, if at least on this one for now. Okay, I expect this to be at the next council meeting in November. With that, With that, we will move on to the next item, which is 12B. And it is a discussion and possible action regarding the boundary agreement with the town of Verona. Mr. Olick, can you give us a brief overview?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. We received a letter from the, the town board wishing to engage in successor agreement discussions. And they, they gave five criteria which they believe should be incorporated into the boundary agreement. And they look forward to working with us. So that's what we got.
Anything else to add, Mr. Klimar?
Is it the intent of the council to discuss possible terms and conditions in closed session? I don't have anything to say in an open session.
Okay. That's, that's useful information, information too. I guess I would open it up in general. Do, do people still want to keep talking, keep negotiating regarding the boundary agreement? Alder Weiss and Alder Tucker Long.
I lack context to have a strong opinion, so I'll, you know, I await others, you know. More information to ask smart questions, but I don't, I don't have any, any opinion on that right now.
Okay. Alder Tucker Long.
Are you, are you asking us if we want to continue negotiating in open session or just in general?
In general, because like if everyone's like, we're willing to walk away from it, that would be a different discussion. And then we wouldn't need to go into closed session for that, I don't think. But if we want to keep talking, then I do think, like Mr. Klimar said, we should probably talk terms and conditions in closed session.
I would like to keep negotiating.
Yeah, are you looking, I mean, the, the other option, I'm not sure where we're at in discussions right now is, I, I know, Mayor, you had sent a letter and obviously I think this is response. I think they sent one letter responsive to, to what the city said. And now we've received this and I don't know, are you looking, the other option is, is council looking for staff to come up with different terms and conditions to present to the, to the, to the council at a subsequent meeting too? I don't know if that's something.
I guess, I guess I, my, my, I think it's probably worth continuing to negotiate and talk because it's, it's always worth negotiating usually. And I don't think we've quite reached the angrily stomp away phase of the, the process. And even if that happens, it doesn't mean you can't come back and negotiate later anyway. But I just wanted to make sure because like, just because I think we should keep negotiating doesn't necessarily mean anyone else does. And so I wanted to put it to the group that, you know, and I know, I know it's late and hopefully nobody would make a decision on based on whether they want to go home or not. But I did want to open it up to the group that like, doesn't make sense to keep talking about negotiations. Alder Humke.
Because I can't keep all this, I'm really tired. Can you just give a quick refresher of like the, what happens if we don't negotiate? Like what are the, like for, let's just say for Alder Weiss, what is the risk? Or like what is the outcome if we don't, if we just say we walk away from it? Because I need a refresher too.
Well, I, I believe that the agreement ends in, in July of 2026. I 100% agree with Mayor that we should continue negotiations. And, you know, again, one, one, especially because it is late, one option for the council is to say, hey, I, I know, I know that the city of Verona sent a letter. I know that we've received a couple of letters from the town. Can, can you come to us? And I think it would be a closed session discussion at, at a subsequent meeting of, okay, we, we know what the town has said. How do we want to respond to that? I, I would think that that would be something that you'd want to do. Because while obviously they've taken a different position in the letter that came back to the city, I still think that there's room for discussion. And, you know, there's always value in having a boundary agreement if you can get there. The, the letter that we received from the town flags one of the benefits. And that is if you have a boundary agreement through annexation, you can create town islands. Whereas if you do not have a boundary agreement by state statute, you cannot create town islands through annexations. And so, and the town knows that that's a benefit to, to the city. And, and you know, and, and so we're not giving away any strategy in having that statement in open session. But it, you know, there is value to it. And, and so, you know, I definitely think that there's things that staff could come up with that are, you know, maybe, you know, a little bit different than the letter that the city sent before, but also, you know, not necessarily, not agreeing with what the town, you know, compromise, you know, negotiations. I think, I think that that ability is there.
I just want to point out one thing though, like it is a huge benefit to the city to be able to take, to annex to the city and have town islands. But like the alternative is forced annexation. And the fact that we, there's no need for the city to do it because it's a nasty and unpleasant process for everyone involved. That benefits town residents as well and it benefits the town's tax base where they get to have pockets of neighborhoods here and there that could remain on their tax roll. So like it is a benefit for us and I would never deny that. But like, it's a, it's a benefit from them.
Yeah, it's, it's not a totally one-sided benefit. I would agree with that statement.
And then I guess other potential benefits of a boundary agreement, you get neat and orderly development. You have stuff that's been hopefully laid out in a clear and concise manner. So we, we're less likely to end up in court and things like that. And you get, you get certainty like the city's going to develop here, town's going to be, develop here and we don't end up in a fight or an argument over it. And it's, it helps and it helps developers and other people kind of know what to expect. Alder Swanson.
So I guess this, a question is for Attorney Klimar. Would it be reasonable to just say tonight, like, hey, based on what we've gotten back and the feasibility of staff putting together more information for us, we are open to continuing to negotiate and we'd like to talk about this more next time?
Yes, absolutely.
That 100%, council can do that on, on most things, really.
I, I think I'm more with that course of action.
Okay. What is everyone else thinking? I'm seeing nodding heads. Does anyone want to talk about it tonight?
No.
And you don't need to take any action either. I mean, that's just, I think, I agree with the mayor that I saw nodding heads and I think that that's direction to staff to, hey, why don't you come up with some ideas essentially? I mean, the, the other thing I would say is if, if, if the parties are able to do a new boundary agreement, we're not reinventing the wheel, you know, it's not going to be exactly what we have right now. But there is a lot of language in the current agreement that I think both parties agree have worked out well. We have language in there regarding Ice Age Trail, Stormwater, other things of that nature that I think would likely carry over. It's probably the, the more difficult items that we would need to negotiate, particularly as it relates to kind of how the different areas are identified within the existing boundary agreement and how that would move forward.
Okay. All right. Unless anyone else has anything else to add, we will move on to the next item, which is adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Hoeks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Humke. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And we adjourned at 10:46 PM. Thank you, everyone.